To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes depending on the number of speakers.
Welcome to a special meeting of the Burbank City Council, Wednesday, June 14th, 2023. We start every meeting with a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support for our beloved community, so let's just take a moment now. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll.
Councilmember Mullins?
Here.
Councilmember Perez?
Present.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Here.
Noting the absence of Vice Mayor Schultz. And Mayor Anthony?
Present.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Schultz shall be joining us shortly. Break the tie. Please don't throw that out there that there's gonna be a... Okay. There will be one period of public comment during tonight's public hearing. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. If you'd like to call in, the number is 818-238-3335. This is the time and place for the hearing for public input regarding the content of draft maps and sequencing of elections submitted to propose a districting plan for the city's proposed transition to district-based city council elections. Before we begin the public hearing, are there any disclosures related to the hearing from anybody here?
No.
Okay. All right. And just for everyone's sake, this has been an ongoing process, so all council members have been briefed on a number of issues, nothing that would lead to any sort of bias. Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, they have.
Thank you. And do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
Yes, you do.
Okay. And has the city received any written communications on this matter, and have they been provided to all city council members?
Yes, and yes, you have.
Okay, great. Mr. City Attorney, will you please summarize the matter for us and introduce the city's consultant?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public. So, tonight, this public hearing is the city council's third public hearing on converting from at-large elections to by-district elections. The staff report covers the history of the process, but in recent, in the last month, the city has held two public hearings on districting and mapping, and three community workshops on mapping, and as well as had an online map drawing tool and Draw Your Neighborhood tool available. This evening, we will be going over the product of that mapping effort and discussing the course forward for the rest of the districting process. As well, attached to the staff report this evening is information on ranked choice voting that the city council requested at its last public hearing. It's a general overview of ranked choice voting. One of the exhibits is called Rank Choice Voting 101, as well as a formal request from our city clerk, Ms. Kimberly Clark, to LA County Register Recorder about the possibility of adding ranked choice voting to the county system, and a formal response from the county dated June 8th indicating that in order to implement ranked choice voting, the county's system, Voting Solutions for All People VSAP, would require adapting, modifying, and enhancing the VSAP voting system to allow for ranked choice voting, which would require authority time and appropriate resources. They also make reference to a lack of legislative authority for the county of Los Angeles. Any changes to the voting system would be subject to testing and approval by the California Secretary of State.
And that letter's in the hearing, yes?
That is the... Yes, that's the third attachment to the staff report for this evening. The city clerk's office is available. I'm available, but without further ado...
Well, actually, before we get to that, just real quick, in case this is someone's very first time tuning into this and they hadn't any idea what's going on, could you just give us a quick description of at-large versus districts, just so we're all on the same page?
Well, so, at-large is electing council representatives citywide, so all electors in the city get to vote for all council members that are running in a given cycle. In our current case, we have two cycles. In one cycle, two members run. Two years later, three members run. They each serve for four terms, so it's staggered offices, two and three. By-district voting is a method of dividing the city up into population-balanced areas in which electors in each geographic district vote only for councilmember candidates from that district. It's a method prescribed in the California Voting Rights Act, which gives effect to voting minorities with the intent of increasing their influence in elections.
Okay.
The city received a threat of litigation under the California Voting Rights Act alleging that the city's system diluted Latino voters' votes on August 23rd, 2022, and the city adopted on January 24th a resolution of intent to initiate and transition to district elections. We have since been in the process of identifying what those districts would look like. So this evening...
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas Johnson from National Demographics Corporation, he is our districting consultant, expert in these matters and working throughout the state, is going to explain where we are tonight with the mapping process and where we will be going in the near future.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here with you again. Let me see, is this working? Yeah, here we go. So, the first part of this presentation's gonna be a little bit of summary that was covered in the first two hearings, kind of the timeline and that kind of thing, and then we'll get into the new material today, which is the meat of today, which is the draft maps that have come in. And there's a bunch of them, so it'll take some time to go through them. First of all, we are in Phase 1 of a three-phase process, as been talked about. In order to get into compliance with the California Voting Rights Act, the process the city council's laid out is first, we're going to adopt a five-district map. That'll get us into compliance with the law, avoid the threat of litigation. That's Phase 1. And I'll go through the dates on this in just a moment. Phase 2 will be a bigger, broader discussion of other alternatives. There may be more districts. There may be districts with a citywide mayor. There may be ranked choice voting. All those kinds of other ideas will be discussed in a more broad and general discussion in Phase 2. And Phase 2 will culminate, if it arrives at that point, with putting a measure on the March ballot for the voters to look at an alternative to the five-district system. So, three phases. We're focused today on Phase 1. As was just mentioned, we've gone through the initial two hearings, which were just informational. There were no draft maps at those hearings. And then there were a number of community forums to get initial input and to encourage folks to draw maps, and I'm very happy to say the response has been great on that. And so now we're getting into picking a map and revising maps. So tonight is really the first official look-through of all the draft maps. Once the council has reviewed and discussed them, this will kick off another round of public forums. And so that'll be another round of people having the opportunity to weigh in on what maps they like, potentially make changes to them. All coming back to, the deadline for residents to submit maps is July 7th. That leads up to the July 18th hearing, at which hopefully we'll be wrapping Phase 1 and picking a map and introducing the ordinance. There'll then be a final hearing, July 25th, with adoption, with second reading and adoption of that ordinance. So that's Phase 2, Phase 1, and then that would lead into this fall, Phase 2, and the more general approach to other election systems. We always like to remind folks at every meeting of what are the rules governing this process? So, for those, we have a number of regulars, I'm happy to say, that have been coming often. They could probably go through this slide just as well as I can at this point. But we've got federal laws, we've got equal population, comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, and no racial gerrymandering, so race can't be the predominant factor. It's allowed to be one factor in the decision. Then we have the state criteria, the Fair Maps Act, and these are prioritized order. Districts have to be contiguous. Districts have to minimize the division of neighborhoods and what the law calls communities of interest. The third one is following easily identifiable boundaries, things like freeways, rivers, that kind of thing. And then the fourth state requirement is compact. You're not supposed to bypass one group of people to get to another group of people, unless it's to serve a higher-ranked priority. So, keep in mind, those are all prioritized. And then the state also prohibits the drawing or selecting of a map for the purpose of favoring or discriminating against a political party. So those are the requirements. Those are in federal and state law. Then the courts have also said you can look at what are called traditional principles or traditional redistricting goals. These are not requirements, they're simply things you can look at once all the other statutory requirements are met. So the two in districting are respecting the voters' choices by minimizing the pairing of incumbents. Again, not a requirement, but it is allowed. And the idea behind this is the voters have chosen the council. To the degree it's possible within all the other requirements, it's fine to try to let the reelection decisions be left up to the voters as well by not pairing anybody. So that's the idea behind that principle. You can also, to a very limited degree, consider future population growth. If you know one district's gonna grow faster than the others, you can under-populate it by a couple of percent within that equal population requirement. So those are the rules. And again, at the forums, we've gone through these items in detail, I'll just mention them today. We've been thrilled at the response of the city and residents to this, to the outreach, and people have been drawing maps, and they can continue to draw maps, all the way up to July 7th. They can simply use the online tools on the city website to review the maps in detail, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later as I go through the maps. They can use a, we have a paper map that has population numbers on it, and so anyone that doesn't want to use a computer can just grab that and draw their map. And then there's Draw Your Neighborhood and the online tool, and I draw a full-blown map with all the block-by-block data that I have in your online website. So we do encourage people, this is not the end, to keep drawing maps and keep participating in this process. As was mentioned, we've had a number of community forums already, and the early ones are always tough because it's very theoretical and abstract. We're talking about districts, but it's not very specific to their daily life. But I'm thrilled to say we've had 67 people come out, very robust discussions. It's been really good to see the crowds turn out for that. And they responded to the tools as well. We got 14 maps were drawn in the Draw Your Neighborhood tool, and I'll go through those in a minute. And we actually, to be honest, many more maps than I expected, with 26 maps drawn using the online mapping tool or the paper kits. One of the things people say is, well, there's 100,000 people, 26 is nothing. But the reality is, there aren't that many ways to draw up the city. And it is, it does take a lot of time and a lot of attention to detail. So both, I'm pleasantly surprised by how many maps there are, and I'm also impressed with the creativity people showed in the variety of maps that came in. And so that's our main goal tonight, is to go through those maps and look at them all. You'll see I have them grouped to kind of help process through because there are so many maps. Obviously, it's a public hearing, we then want to hear public comment. And then the takeaway from this, and hopefully residents will think about this in their comments too, is not to arrive at one map. Obviously, if they have a favorite map, they should share that thought. But at this stage, we still have a whole nother round of community forums, so our goal now is to narrow this down to three, four, or five, what we call focus maps. It's not formal, it's not official. It doesn't mean that people can't comment on the other maps, but 26-plus maps is a lot of maps for residents to go through and then come up with ideas and comment on. So if we can get it down to three to five, that makes it much more easy for residents to process and share their detailed thoughts. We don't want them going through a map and looking street by street, a map that has no chance of passing because there's no interest in it. This is also the council's opportunity, after you hear from the public, to give direction on any additional maps you'd like to see, and we're happy to draw those. It's not up to you to draw your own maps or anything like that. So, first of all, let me briefly go through the neighborhood and community maps. These are really, it's a simple tool on the website. You just go in and you click on the different corners of your neighborhood, and then a box pops up and says, "Tell us about your neighborhood." So we did get 14 of these submitted. One person sort of sketched out districts in the neighborhood tool. One neighborhood was Idea 1, and it was roughly a district, and one was 2. No population numbers, obviously, it's not population balanced, but it was a creative use of the tool that we're happy to see. I guess I shouldn't be surprised, we have a lot of creative people here in Burbank. So that was, it wasn't so much neighborhoods as their idea of just easily sketching out districts. Then we had someone, if you go on the website, and I do encourage you to go through the detailed comments, and I'll show them, although it's a little hard to see in the PowerPoint. I summarized the comments. One was kind of a largely neighborhood of retirees. One was a fairly quiet neighborhood, and they liked the kind of community, quiet neighborhood area.
Number 3 is fun.
Yeah. One just drew a neighborhood and then said, "I'm opposed to leaf blowers," and talked about wanting to ban them. I'm sure not the first time the council's heard of that issue about, but people were...
It's a community of interest.
Exactly. I suspect it's a wider issue than that little area, but they submitted it, we want to respect their input. There was someone who drew just a little square and then said you should just follow zip codes in the city. Logical, easy for people to understand. The problem is zip codes are not at all population-balanced, so we can't do that. But that idea does come up a lot because it is really easy to identify. There was a, and then we get into more kind of community of interest, neighborhood-focused comments. There was an area describing the area of the bike path to the Buena Vista Library, East Magnolia Park. You can see the list here. And then 11, my most trafficked, I do recommend you look at the comments for these, but that was just someone said, "The area where I live, where I go to work, and where I, you know, have my kids in school is right here, so this is the area I traffic the most, it's my community, my neighborhood," which is perfectly logical and makes sense. So, we did include these, so if people do pull up the PowerPoint, they will see the 14 maps here, and I did capture all the comments for each one. So residents, I do encourage them to share their thoughts. If they do have a concern about one of the chosen focus maps coming out of tonight, they don't have to go and redraw it. They can simply go in the neighborhood tool, say, "Hey, in Map 101, this area should be moved to that district." And again, we've got 14 of these all submitted with fairly detailed comments in some of them. The map 3 of 3, this is Ideas 1, 2, and 3, where they're kind of three proposed, very rough district ideas. So, that's a lot of introduction to get us to the heart and meat of today, which is the draft maps. So we have 27 unique public maps drawn by 29 people. Two people, coincidentally, I think, I believe, submitted the same map, and then two people intentionally submitted the same map, July 27 versus 29. We only label the map once if it comes in multiple times. 22 of those 27 were population-balanced, which is a lot more than, a much higher percentage than we usually get. So kudos to people for putting in the time and figuring out how to really fine-tune these to get these just right.
Because it'll tell you before you submit, right? It gives you the numbers on each of the...
Yes. As you're drawing, it gives you the numbers, and then there's another screen you can pop to that puts a big red light if it's not balanced. So, yes. So it does tell you that you've done it, but a lot of people, it takes a lot of work. A lot of people get frustrated and just hit submit, or they don't double-check everything. Then our role in this process, given that there's this much public input, is really just to fill in the blanks. So, take ideas that came in in the community forums, take ideas that may be in the maps that weren't population-balanced, and try to put those in so you have a full range of maps before you. And so we added, as NDC, added two more maps to the mix, which gives you a total of 24 population-balanced maps. I should note, there is an additional map that came in after the deadline. The state law does require that maps to be considered by the council have to be posted seven days in advance. So we got, and it's not submitted to the city seven days in advance, it's posted on the website, which involves a lot of work on our part and city staff part to process the maps. So we do have one more map that'll come in and be part of the, it will be part of the community forums, and it will officially be in your packets and everything for the next meeting, as will whatever other maps come in, of course. So, what we do, what we found works very well when we get a lot of maps, as we have here, is to try to group them. And the idea here is that residents may have similar ideas, and often one person will spend three hours, do a map, and submit it pretty quick. And then someone else will have a very similar idea, but spend three days and really fine-tune it. And essentially, roughly, they're the same map, but one is much more fine-tuned and polished than the other one would be. And so we try to group them, and kind of to get the discussion going, NDC kind of weighs in on, "This one seems to be the best representative of the ideas in the group." I always caution this, but the first time we had to do this was in El Cajon, and we had five groups of maps, and NDC had picked one in each group that seemed to be the best representative. The council disagreed with all five of our picks, which was fantastic because then they just switched it. We ended up with five maps, and that's really the goal. So, our kind of highlighted maps is just our take on it, 100% open to residents and the council saying, "In this group, we like that one and not this one." The other piece of it is, you do have, like I said, people were very creative and came up with a wide variety of options. So we do have seven different groups. So, if, after public comment, the council may want to just say, "You know, let's knock out these two groups and focus on one map from these four or five other groups." So, with that, I'll jump in. We do want to acknowledge, we appreciate the work done by the folks, even if they didn't submit a population-balanced map. They did submit a map, and they took the time. So, we do share these so that people can see what the idea was. You'll see almost all of these ideas in additional maps, but these are out there, and you can see kind of where people were going, and they did capture just about all the different groups in the non-population-balanced maps. I will note, the author of Map 108 submitted it early enough to get the note saying it was not population-balanced, and then revised it and submitted 108B. So that is a population-balanced map. First of all, in Group A, we have three maps in this group. Generally, and I'm gonna speak very generally because there's a lot of maps to go through, and as noted at the bottom of the PowerPoint here, all of these have been available in the interactive review map for weeks, so people can zoom in and look street by street and search for addresses and all that. Really, what we get here is, in the west of I-5, is three kind of vertically-stacked districts, you know, an airport district, a middle district, and a southern district are the three. And then over on the east side of I-5, it's two districts that go all the way up into the hills, so kind of side by side, a north and a south seat over there. So, all three of these have generally the same idea, they obviously vary in the little details. Just looking at this, 123 seems, you know, it clearly is the best at following major roads, that state criteria, and being compact. So of these three, that one seemed to capture the idea the best, but these are three very similar maps, so that's Group A. Group B is similar on the west side of the freeway with three kind of vertically-stacked districts in each of these maps. But on the east is very different. There's one district that takes in the hills and kind of the north part of the east side of the freeway, and then one district that's on the east side of the freeway, more or less, but very focused on the freeway corridor. So that's, it's gonna get a lot of renters that area along there. So, that's what differentiates A from B is the makeup of the two seats in the east. And in this one, we were looking at it, there were many different maps that could have been chosen, but we highlighted probably 103 seems to capture that the best. But again, the public is free to disagree, and if you come out of this with just one map from this group, that's our goal. Group C takes a different approach on the west. So in this case, we still have one northern seat, much like in A and B, but the southern seats on the west are side by side instead of on top of each other. So you get kind of a southwestern seat, and then kind of more, I wouldn't say it's aligned with I-5, but it's the west side of I-5 going over until you hit the population number division there. And then, all of these tended to also focus on the east side with one seat that's clustered along the freeway, and then one that has all the hills and then comes down. So it's very similar to B on the east side, but differs significantly on the west side. And I'm going through these quickly, obviously. Happy to come back and talk in more detail, and again, people, as these have been posted for a week, I'm hoping most people have already looked at them and gotten their thoughts together on them. Group D is three very different maps that were challenged to group, but what they all have in common is kind of a central seat. So you can see in Map 112, the purple seat really is significant areas on both sides of the freeway and kind of that central region. Map 114 in the middle, and 126 really capture that with a seat that is really the geographic center of the city. And then having a seat to the south of it and a seat to the north of it along the I-5 corridor. So you get three to four I-5 corridor seats in each of these maps. A very different approach to what we've seen before. Group E is more of a freeway focus. So these were three residents who really drew two seats focused on getting both sides of that I-5 corridor. And it's not just the freeway, as we've gone through before, you know, there's a lot of multifamily clustered around there, there's a lot of renters, and there's more of a Latino population along I-5 and along 101 to the south. But these three have two districts very distinctly focused on that I-5 corridor and catching both sides of it in different ways. 110 and 118 on the outsides are very similar with what they end up with to the west of the central corridor. 116 has a very different makeup of the, what you see is the green and tan seats on this map. And then, over where 110 and 118 really differ is the makeup of the hills district, where it comes down and how it comes down, and how it interrelates with the northern of the two freeway districts. So, three very interesting maps. We looked at 118, probably best captures the goals of this group. And then Group F, this is the last of the groups, and I have two unique maps that didn't fit into any group at the end. This has an interesting twist. Again, it has two seats very much focused on the I-5 corridor. But then, you know, we didn't get a lot of comments, and I suspect many of the map authors will be commenting today or at the forums, which is great, we want to hear their thinking. But looking at these maps and generally taking it, I think what's going on is the pink one is trying to be a Magnolia Park district, and then you're getting a district kind of wrapping around that and picking up the rest of the territory. This is a good illustration of the criteria as well. So, the definition of compactness is not bypassing one group of people to get to another. So that wraparound seat clearly is bypassing one group of people to get to another, but it's doing it in order to keep Magnolia Park together. So this is why I say compactness, you know, we have to follow it unless it's, unless there's a higher-ranked criteria that explains why that's done. So, it looks odd from compactness, but if it's done to keep a community together, that's acceptable under state law. Then the last two, 124 is a resident-drawn map that takes another approach. All five districts cross the freeway. So you're getting a mix of east of the freeway, west of the freeway, in all five of the districts. This used to be a very common thought as we did projects, and it's schools and special districts, it's still done a lot, but as noted here, that raises a lot of questions under the Fair Maps Act of dividing communities of interest. We often talk about some areas benefit from being divided, in which case they're not a community of interest, but it's, it would be tough to make that case that this complies with the Fair Maps Act. But the off of the map may have a very good description of why it's drawn that way and But the off of the map may have a very good description of why it's drawn that way and how it could comply with the Fair Maps Act, so we're not making any decision now. But I am flagging that as something that we would have to address in the record extensively before adopting that option. And then 128 was a map capturing some of the ideas that had come up, but they weren't in a map. You can see on the east side of the freeway, it's the hills and then bordering the freeway, much like a number of the maps you've seen so far. But what wasn't in the mix as we went through it is really what had come up a couple times, a kind of Rancho, Rancho adjacent area, and in this case, really separate from Magnolia Park. So the tan area is aimed at capturing Magnolia Park over to the edge of the city, which I fully acknowledge divides a bit of Magnolia Park, divides the standoff from some people that describe that as part of Magnolia Park. But it does get a different approach to that area, highly compact and meets the other criteria, but just something that wasn't in the mix, and so that's the one kind of blank we wanted to fill in and have on the table for discussion. So a brief spin, as I mentioned, I am hoping that residents have taken the week to look at the maps and look at them in detail. One other item worth mentioning, this is not something that needs to be addressed tonight, but the other piece of this is that the PDF maps on the website all talk about the sequencing, which seats will be up in which years. And so we did want to cover that a little bit, provide, this very dense slide, my apologies for that, but it is a lot of information. And the sequencing is which year does each seat come up per election? So if each council member ends up in a separate seat, all the pieces fall into place, and each seat's just assigned to that council member's year. The challenge is when we get two council members in one seat. If they're both up in the same year, great, that's the year that seat comes up, and then the vacant seat is assigned to the other, to fill the blank. If they're in different years, it gets kind of complicated, and I'll just very briefly touch on this, and we'll come back to it later on when we only have two or three maps, and it's easier to wrap your head around it. But if a council member's term ends in 2024, and they end up in a 2026 seat, this will be that council member's last term. They'll leave office in 2024 because they don't live in a seat where they can run. They could then run as a non-incumbent in 2026 when that seat does come up. So that's where, I mentioned earlier, we don't like to take away the voters' reelection decisions. That's where it's not the two councilors who run against each other, it is possible that one just won't be able to run. On the flip side of a 2026 member ends up in 2024, that, this doesn't happen very often, but the 2026 member can actually choose to run midterm for the seat. So even though they just ran in 2022, they'd run again in 2024. If they win, they would be sworn into that seat, that district seat, for four years and resign the remaining two years of their at-large seat, and have an at-large vacancy. If they lose, they actually stay on the council to finish the remaining two years of their at-large seat. So I always encourage people, if this is the case, run a civil-friendly campaign, because it's entirely possible that two people could run against each other, one could win and one could lose, and you could still both end up on the dais.
But that's rare.
It's very rare.
Okay.
Yes, it does happen, but that's a kind of, that's where the sequencing gets complicated and things get messy if you end up with people in different years. The other part I do have to mention, too, at the council's request, we had posted on the website, the council, the census blocks where the council members reside. We did learn later on that Councilmember Perez had moved, and we had the old address, so we didn't share it nine days ago, because we didn't want to give anyone a last second advantage, but I'm sharing now that we'll update that map. It does impact the sequencing posted on over half the maps. So on all those, on the maps, there is proposed sequencing, that will be changing on a lot of them, but I did want to mention that. It's just a matter of time that the address getting translated and handed over didn't happen in time, and then when we did catch it, we didn't want to switch it mid-process for people that already submitted maps.
It's about a block away.
It is, and I looked at it, it wasn't very far, and then unfortunately, I looked at the numbers of maps, and it's like 15 of the 26 maps, it switches what district you're in.
Wow.
So, so I was like, oh, so.
Well, so let me ask you this.
So we have plenty of time to adjust maps. Sorry, no, go ahead.
No, no, finish your thing, we'll go to public comment, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, yeah, so I do want to mention that, so for folks interested, we'll update that map, actually, tonight, so it'll show the proper location. And like I said, this is just the first take on these maps, there's lots of time to revise and amend the maps, if that's a factor that anyone is concerned about in how the maps play out. So just as we jump off, I will share a couple of numbers for comparison. As I mentioned, the 26 may not sound like a lot of 100,000, but for comparison, we're doing Thousand Oaks right now, and their initial map submission deadline just passed, they're about the same size, and they got 11 maps submitted. And we're doing Irvine, which is much larger, and their deadline hasn't hit yet, so they may catch up, but right now, they were only at 13 maps. So Burbank is doing great in getting those maps in. Just to summarize, the goal of tonight's hearing is to hear from the residents which map or which group best represents their neighborhood or community of interest. We'd love to hear from residents if there are groups that they're like, no, let's just eliminate everything in that group, because that narrows the list very quickly. And then within the preferred group, if they have one or two, which map or maps would they prefer in that group? Again, the goal is to get down to three to five tonight. The reason we say three to five is that we still have that one map coming in, there will likely be two or three more, at least two or three more maps that come in, plus you may have requests to revise maps, so we'll be right back at 10 maps for the next meeting, if we narrow it down to three to five tonight. So I have this slide with all the maps on it, if people want to see it. They're very small, but they're a quick reference, and that's my presentation. Do you have any questions now, or wish to wait?
Let's do some public comment real quick. Thank you for that presentation. Now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council for up to three minutes on this public hearing item only, and for members of the public who are here in person, please present a completed salmon-colored public hearing card and present it to our city clerk. If you're wishing to call in, 818-238-3335. First, we have former mayor Gary Brick, followed by David Donahue. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Constantine Anthony, I know Vice Mayor Schultz you said will be here.
Yeah, he's on his way.
The rest of council and staff that I had the pleasure of working with for years. I'm here, obviously, I have a passion with this, and I'll tell you why. For me to give up a Dodger game and to not be sitting on the couch to come down here, that means I'm pretty serious. Anyway, I want you to know that I spoke to Dr. David Gordon, former councilman and mayor earlier today, a couple hours ago, and he and I are on the same page. In all the years we served on council, we disagreed on quite a few things, but we're together on this one. You know, we're not the city of LA, we're 17 square miles, 100, what, 108,000 residents or something, and that's one of the problems that I have. You know, it's been 111 years that this at-large has worked for the city of Burbank, and I think that we're now putting the cart in front of the horse. Now, I remember last time I spoke that Constantine, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Schultz, I mentioned about throwing the towel in, and he said that you guys weren't doing that. Well, I'm just wondering, we had a staff report just now explaining all the districting and all that stuff. I'm wondering, are we going to get a staff report about coming out and meeting with the council and talking to them and asking them to bring it to an election? I think that should be done, I really and truly do. You know, when you talk about this district and living on the hillside, Telemontes, Gordon, and myself, we all live on the hillside. For 30 years, we have experience on the council, and we're all mayors, ex-mayors. And with this new system, only one of us could run, and that's pretty sad, okay, because you have a lot of input there from people that have a lot of experience on the council. You know, I see all the signs around town about districting and all this stuff, the parks and all that stuff. Once again, nothing about contacting your officials about possibly sending this out to a vote. Now, I know you've tried to get the input out about these meetings, and if you look, last time I was here, we all agreed the chambers should be packed, and they're not. And I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong, don't get me wrong, just a lot of people don't like to speak and stuff like that. So anyway, I'm running out of town. Anyway, so anyway, all I ask is that you discuss about the possibility of sending this out for a vote, okay? And I know that your hands are, I don't like to use the word tied, but there are certain parameters that you want to work within, but I think it's very important to send this out. And my last comment is that, you know, the mayor mentioned about Vice Mayor being a little bit late, and he would show up, but your comment about he could be the deciding vote, boy, that sounds like a Brown Act violation to me, I got to be serious. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you. Mr. Donahue, followed by Mary Dixon.
Honorable Mayor Anthony, absent Vice Mayor Schultz, rest of council. So my comments today are about rent control, just kidding. I've put a lot of time into this, and the whole districting balancing thing is very interesting. The part of the, and I do appreciate the demographers' presentations and comments, I will take issue with the fact that this is not easy, it's not simple, and to be able to dive into these things is horribly complex. The part that I follow, start with, that I have issue is that the, narrowing it down to three to five of them, my map's not in here. I have about 60 of my maps that have been submitted, they were submitted afterwards. They're the same, because I've been talking to, I have lost count of how many people to get their input about little sort of nuances. The closest one to here is map 128, and if you'll direct your attention to 128, I'm going to kind of talk to you why. So map 128, map 128 has a little bit of a focus, and if you go into District, I think it's one, where Mayor Anthony resides, there is a tiny little sliver of single-family residential lots on 28, that if you look at a satellite map, you can see that there is this little sliver, and you'll see it on my map when you ever get it, it takes out the single-family residential block, there's about two blocks. And what I'm doing in my map is I hyper-focused on the apartments that are in there. So you'll see a very densification of apartments, so that apartment renters, people that are in apartments, are going to be much more represented and have a councilperson that's going to really be advocating for their positions. Any of these maps that dissect the hillside and do include a little bit of the downtown area where you have a lot of the apartments, they are going to be underrepresented, in my opinion, because as a single-family residential homeowner, you are going to be overshadowed by the greater percentage of renters. So my map, which is, again, close to 128, kind of has that balance. The other part that I think was interesting about 128, that it takes into consideration District 5, and I think if you take a look at District 5, this is where it gets really down to it, and Councilmember Perez, are you still close to the Verdugo Pool? Okay. So what it does is I have taken into the third aspect of what the guidelines were from the demographer not to unnecessarily sort of combine, and I combined Councilmember Mullins, Councilmember Tagahashi, and Councilmember Perez, because they're all up in 2026, so that means that that election is not going to have to change, and also does not put Councilmember Tagahashi in Vice Mayor Schultz's district, which is the Rancho. And if there's anything that I would like to offer about Councilmember Tagahashi, she's a Mag Park representative, and I don't, I think that's a safe kind of comment. So my time's up, and I'll be at the forum tomorrow, I hope everybody else is, thank you.
Thank you. Mary Dixon, followed by Garen Yagarian.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Anthony. I just came tonight as a representative of the League of Women Voters. There's been some discussion in the past about our positions or where we stand on things, and I so wanted to give an official statement about that. I'm sorry I missed the earlier meeting. I am on the board of the Greater Los Angeles League, which the Burbank-Glendale League of Women Voters has merged into that now. The League of Women Voters supports electoral systems that elect policymaking bodies such as the City Council in Burbank, that proportionately reflect the people they represent. Now, I read that statement as potentially supporting districting, so I just want to make that clear. On the other hand, we also have a position, and these positions are determined by our members after in-depth study and consensus meetings, where we develop a position statement. We also support electoral systems that inhibit or discourage political manipulation, such as gerrymandering of districts. And so you can read that position to say that we don't support districting. So I think officially, and I spoke with some of the more senior members in the Greater Los Angeles League, that our official position is that we're neutral on districting, so I just wanted to be clear about that. We understand that ranked choice voting has been a topic and discussion as a possible alternative to districting to accomplish what may be the purpose, and we are planning an educational forum for our members, as well as for the public, to have some experts speak on how it works and what could be accomplished by that, just so that we all understand it better. I recall in 2018, I think it was 2018, when I spoke before the council at the time about the realignment of the elections, and I did say at that time that we supported it because we want to see as many voters, eligible voters, voting in any given election, but we were concerned about the loss of the primaries and how ranked choice voting could address that, but of course, we know there are some technical issues with that still. So once I have information about our forum, I'll be sure to let everybody know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Garen Yagarian, followed by Anne Nahabedian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, speaking on behalf of the Burbank Armenian National Committee. I've got a few points, starting with a couple of questions. Map 113 seems to be from Santa Clarita, and what I pulled up, are we missing a map just for future reference? Or did I somehow get something weird? Like I said, a couple of questions. Okay, that question got answered in Doug's presentation. Okay, so one of our basic concerns from the perspective of the Armenian community is that, given where people have happened to settle down, I-5 is a dividing line. It's also a very natural dividing line for the city, so any district, basically, except what's unavoidable due to numerical balancing, that crosses that line isn't a non-starter from our perspective, it's problematic. It's also problematic just from the historic sort of character of the city, you know, the hillside, the flats and all this. And also, similarly with the Rancho, I think the other gentleman remarked, I think that's another natural district that should remain contiguous, because that's a very specific community of interest there. So that's the main guiding principle. And given the numbers, basically, we're going to end up with two districts on the hillsides. In trying to get our data together to have a more precise view of our community, we hit an obstacle, so we lost about three weeks in trying to compile the data, and at the very end, apologetically and embarrassingly, we didn't submit maps. We have some rough sketches, which I'll hold up in a minute, which I left behind me if I have time, but they represent this. There's two perspectives of what might best be. One is sort of a north-south division, and the other one is sort of more of a boxed area, starting at the Glendale line, and encompassing more the rental units and condos in a rectangular shape, and then sort of an upside-down L surrounding that, again, all east of I-5. So just to compactly say which maps are at least reasonably close to what might be good, those are maps 103, 105, 106, 117, 119, 120, and 123. Maps that aren't horrible but are still undesirable are 102, 104, 107, 108, well, 108B, based on what was explained, 115, 121, 122, and 128. And the bad ones are, again, basically anything that crosses the highway, which is 101, 109, 110, 111, 112, if I'm going too fast, I apologize, 114, 116, 118, 124, 125, 126, and 127. Oops, okay, I guess I can't show you the maps.
Thank you, Garen. Anne Nahabedian, followed by Cheryl Williams-Cory.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm going to
Going to pick up where my colleague, I'm coming here on behalf of the ANCA Burbank, where my colleague left off. And I wanted to say that I second the maps which speak of where we break it up in, let's say, maximum of two districts for the Armenians. And the visual of the two maps, the rough sketches, correct? Would be these two. I don't know. I'm not allowed to give them to you.
Can you just hold them up to the camera?
Oh, yeah. Which one?[638.16][638.16](Laughter). This, to my right. There you go.
And you have a few minutes if you want to explain why those two work.
I don't.
Okay.
It's just, it has been already roughly sketched out by our team at the ANCA, and is obviously based on how all these districts would subdivide and dilute the Armenian population. So looking based on that, this is the closest. And like I said, Mr. Yagarian has looked at the maps that have already been submitted, trying to fit from these 26, what fits closest to what would be acceptable to us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I have Cheryl Williams-Cory, followed by Karen McMurray.
Good evening, council members and staff. I'm sorry I'm becoming a regular. I worked 100 hours a week, and now I had to get involved and realize what's going on. So I basically came tonight because I feel like Burbank residents, a lot of times, don't get adequate time or notice to understand what's really going on, including this project. And part of that is my fault. I saw the soundbites, things about the scanning and that, but actually embracing it and understanding it is a very time-consuming process. So there's this and a number of big projects and things going on in our city that have really big impacts. So in the case of this, I thought, well, if I'm this naive about it, and I consider myself reasonably informed, I did a little poll. I went to St. Francis Xavier Fair last weekend and just talked in general to some people, some I knew, some I didn't, that had boots and stuff. Honestly, most of them either didn't really understand what it was about, or if they'd seen the scans and stuff, the biggest feedback I got was, oh, well, they're just going to do something different with the districts, but we still get to vote, right? Like we always have. No, it fundamentally changes everything. So we had a neighborhood meeting a few nights ago and just did a poll at that. How many people are aware of this and the consequences? 10 of them or so were aware of the redistricting thing. They had no idea that the consequences, for the most part, would be that they would get one vote instead of five, as they've had in the past. So I think that's really important. I think that's a big deal. I think we collectively all have to say, how can we get more involved? And how can we give clef notes or something to the public that helps them understand? People are busy. They look at the end of their phone, and if it's not on Apple News, for the most part, we're not really engaged in it. So having said that, and again, forgive me for not being here four months ago, but in looking at this and just talking to those 75 or 80 people and polling them, is this the only alternative, is to do redistricting? One man came and said, I don't like what's happening, so change everything in Burbank. The other 106,000 people basically are saying, what does that even mean? I'm not sure what it means. I'm trying to play catch-up. I came tonight, there's maps and everything out. I went online and looked. It's overwhelming when you're coming in late to the party anyway, but initially, it's still a pretty overwhelming project. You guys have a staff that helps you with the notes and everything. We are our own staff, right? So we have to kind of pull our resources. But I'm really looking for some alternatives that would help with that. I guess my main question is, is this a done deal? Is there an opportunity for the people, just the 80 that didn't know about it, and however many others there are not around that didn't know about it, to say, what are the other alternatives? How can I keep my five votes? Can I have four votes? As opposed to, this is where we're at now, and we're going to keep moving from here, and that's going to be that? In the process of looking at this, to sort of what Gary said, is there an opportunity for this to be a ballot measure before it potentially becomes, here's the proposed districts, here's what's going to happen, pick your one person, and have a nice life? So that's really what I'm concerned about. More importantly, I try to help solve problems rather than just come up and complain. If there are things we can do collectively to say, let's meet with two council members and maybe, you know, the attorney, the city attorney, and say, how can we help? Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Karen McMurray, followed by April Fangio.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a resident for 40 years here, and I worked for the city for about 22, now retired. I'm a little late in getting up to date with what is going on. I had an injury, and I'm recovering. But from what people are saying, I would really like this to be put before the electorate. I've talked to my neighbors now. Once I was back out of bed and able to be around, I saw these signs, so I started asking people. Most people I talked to didn't understand what was going on. They said, oh, well, we'll kind of have different districts, and they weren't sure, and they didn't understand that, and if I understand it right, we will only be able to take one vote. Even if three people are running, that we just have one person. We can't vote like in the past. If there were three people that were out there, we could vote on all three. So it seems being terribly restrictive, and I don't see how that is helping the situation. Or the basic problem, I guess, is that people don't feel, of course, you would know better than me, that they're being heard. But if I was one person, and the way it used to be, I could vote for three, and then another person could vote for three in their own way of doing it. And now it seems, I would like it to go to the public for their opinion, because there's too many people that don't seem like me to know all the details. And this is a really big switch. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. April Fangio, followed by Mr. Schlossman.
Good evening. Well, I am a president of a political action committee, Diversity Voter PAC. Our only job is to try to get people to vote, because voter statistics are abysmal. And so, and it came out of looking at the Burbank minorities, and are they showing up to vote? And statistically, no, they're not. So I took it upon myself to start looking at this redistricting and ask the question, will this actually give people more of a voice? Or will it confuse them, and then they just won't vote even more? They'll just, it'll just be too much for them to handle. So with everything else said tonight, I'm still in between on whether I like the idea or not, because I can't tell. But I am concerned about the individual voter. So here's one little possible solution that some people have talked about. I contacted Active Vote. If everyone can actually download, I'll go this way, because that's where the camera is, Active Vote on their smart device. It's like activate, but it's Active Vote. It is actually an app that actually helps you stay informed about local things like this, about districting. If I pull my app up right now, I do have permission to talk about them, by the way. I did contact them. And it'll tell me all of my elected officials, who's running. And I contacted the president of Active Vote, and they said, as soon as we know where the boundaries of the districts are in Burbank, that she will personally update the software to accommodate Burbank, so that the average voter knows what's going on, who their candidates will be, et cetera. So my question to the council tonight is, with all the publicity you guys are doing with the redistricting, you see it everywhere, could we funnel some of that into getting people this into the hands of the people, the Active Vote? Since they are already aware specifically that we're going through redistricting, and that this app is something that we want to get in the hands of the people. And my other question, I thank you to Jill. I spent a lot of time on the phone with her. She gave me a lot of her time. I really appreciate it. Trying to ask the question of, can we compare the voter turnout? Because that's how we know if people are, if their vote is, if they're showing up to vote more, if they're being heard. Because that's what matters. Are they voting or not? And so if, so I would like to compare it to other cities who have already gone through redistricting, and did the redistricting improve the turnout or not? That's kind of something I would like to know. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Schlossman, followed by David Spell.
Good evening, everybody. I think I've made it pretty clear in the past that I'm in favor of districts. And an example of why is because certain groups seem to have a lot of power, the hillside section, the Rancho. And I'll give you some examples of the Rancho. You know, these are the donors, these are the folks who are vocal, who support their candidates. And we had, like, over at that AAA building, where AAA is now on Alameda, there was a shopping center. And they said, well, we don't want another shopping center. So the five council members at the time went along with it. And then they said, well, we don't want the grocery store, Whole Foods. And the council members went along with it. Then we had, most recently, the Pickwick deal, where they jumped up and down, and the five of you went along with it. And it cost us, you know, I don't even know the total, more than $1 million. And if we would have had these districts, maybe we wouldn't have had, we would have had different opinions on these things. So that's one thing. So I disagree with former Mayor Brick. another area of concern is the ANC here. And I don't know what they're trying to accomplish. Are they trying to keep a certain group together? Or are they trying to whack up a certain group so they can have more power and gain control over two potential council members? And this is the very definition of gerrymandering. And you should exclude that. All mapmakers should exclude that from consideration of a particular group. This is what we're trying to avoid. This is a big deal. And, you know, change is here, and this needs to happen. And I'd go with it. I wouldn't even consider spending money to challenge it. It's something that you can't win. It needs to happen. And in all these maps, I want to be able to keep an eye on the five of you who ultimately are going to choose the map. And I think that where each of you live, there should be an overlay somewhere. And one of you brought that up. And that should be public, too, because I didn't see that. But ultimately, I want to make sure there's no conflict going on there. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. David Spell, and that's my last speaker card.
We have some callers on the line after Mr. Spell.
Mayor Anthony, members of the council, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I was coming in for educational purposes, because I haven't been able to go to the other hearings. But I'm still, I'm still very concerned that we are not fighting this. I understand that, I disagree with the previous speaker, that we can't just fight it, and we don't have the money, and it's all a money issue. I went back and watched the January 24 meeting, and they talked about, they itemized all the different cities who had fought this, and the cost, of course, $22 million. Whoa. What I would like to know tonight, and I would like the folks to hear, is how much we're paying these wonderful, I mean, they're great, these demographers. How much are we paying them? I'd like to know. Because that should be factored into the conversation. The other thing is public outreach and communication. This is so complicated. I was on the phone with someone for a half an hour, just trying to explain, said, pretend I'm a fifth grader. I said, well, I'm the fifth grader here. So it's an extremely complex issue. I am doing my due diligence and really trying to educate myself. I am not convinced this is going to serve any kind of democratic, you know, any democratic good in the long run. I am concerned that my, you know, five votes are now down to one district. Also, you look at these maps, every single one of them, you can see where the money is. Those candidates are going to be highly funded. You think the people in the flats are going to have as much money and influence on this? Will there be good quality candidates in those areas? If we do fight it and we do lose, what are the consequences? And then the biggest question I have, and I would hope that you could answer this tonight, is that can we decouple from the county in order to have our own elections again? Is that anything that can happen? Because this is such a dramatic change. We have to take that into consideration. I'm also concerned, I'm sorry, stream of consciousness, I apologize to the viewers out there and the people waiting on the phone with prepared remarks. But the thing is, are we, are we shooting ourselves in the foot right now because we're spending all this time and energy on the maps? And then we're going to have seven months from the time we kind of make a decision on a charter amendment, to seven months before the next election, which really means five months, right? Because there's a lot of paperwork that's going to be, five months to determine how we're going to do this in practice is very uncomfortable to me. So I'd love to hear your thoughts on it, and I do appreciate all your work. I'm not here to complain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spell. We'll go to callers.
The first caller is Kevin Muldoon.
Hello, Kevin. You've got three minutes.
Hello, council members this evening. You know, as most people have mentioned, you know, this is a really very poor piece of Sacramento legislation. And it's not going to make elections any fairer. In fact, it could do the opposite. And I understand the tactics the plaintiff is using, and thanks to Sacramento, they put roadblocks at every argument. But can you explain to put the ballot on, put a ballot measure on the charter amendment? What are we voting on? Are we voting on a yes or no, an up or down? I'm not quite sure what the voting portion of Phase Four, or whatever that is. I don't think it's a vote to approve or not approve districts. And from what I understand, even if we voted that the city didn't want districts, the minute the ballots are finalized, the plaintiff sues again. So that's not an out. So I just think, you know, we just come out and tell everyone, there's no way out except expense of litigation. And, you know, if we have $600,000 for renter assistance, you know, we can find the money to fight this. We've rolled over on every other Sacramento power grab, and we need to stop this one. And stop right now. If you're going to fight, quit wasting time and money going through the motions. Don't do both. Thank you very much for your time.
The next caller is David Gordon.
Hello, Mr. Gordon. You have three minutes.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just want to point a few things out. With all due respect, in his comments to the city attorney this evening at the beginning of the hearing, he left out an important word when he described the resolution the council previously took. The resolution was not to adopt district-based voting. The resolution was to consider adopting district-based voting. And he has repeatedly left that word out. And there's a big difference between voting to adopt versus voting to consider. So I keep that in mind, please. And the next thing is, I'd like to know what evidence there has been that any of the proposed maps that have been submitted would in any way improve the representation of the minorities which are supposedly in concern here. I think in no circumstances should Burbank's traditional at-large voting system be trashed without the consent of the voters. That's critical in this, whatever form that might take. The city's outreach on the proposal has taken on the appearance of promotional propaganda, highly misleading the public, and has not been well-informed. So that's one of the reasons why nobody is showing up. Not only are they hesitant to speak, but they don't really know, understand enough to speak intelligently about it in many cases. The consultant stated that 26 submitted districts thing was really exciting and a big thing. Well, if you do the math, it's about three tenths of 1%, excuse me, three hundredths of 1% of the population of Burbank submitted maps. I don't think that's as efficient statistic to judge anything. So I don't know what benefit the maps that have been submitted will do, but I do think it has raised interest to some of the speakers that raised this evening. I think the council should step back, at the very least, and discuss, bringing this to a vote of the people. Let the people vote if they understand it, what they want, and what it means to them. And again, without a majority affirmative voter support, I think the council should absolutely prepare to fight this unfounded legal, these unfounded legal allegations and preserve Burbank's unbiased voting process. And along those lines, some of the speakers have mentioned that unintentionally, if this goes forward, I have heard a number of people in the community state that they are concerned that their traditional voting communities, whether it's Hispanic or any other group, will be diluted. So although the intention may be good, we all know where the path leads to good intention, with good intentions, the intention may be good to increase representation. You actually either may dilute You actually either may dilute traditional voting representation, or you may actually, as one of the speakers say, unintentionally wind up gerrymandering by getting a smaller representation of a smaller group controlling with three votes of the council. So, I wish you attended these matters seriously, and hopefully, Council Vice Mayor Phil will be able to tune in here as well. Thank you, and again, please do your best thing, talk to me about these actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next caller is Steve Chessen.
You have three minutes, Steve.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Steve Chessen. I am president of Californians for Electoral Reform, and a nationally recognized expert on electoral systems. Last week, I studied all the submitted maps, and while I support Mr. Gutierrez's goal to make sure protected groups get their fair share of representation on the city council, and have the opportunity to elect candidates of their choice, I don't think any of the maps accomplish that purpose, nor do I think any districting plan can do that. The highest Latino citizen age voting population, or CVAP, for any district in any of the maps is 33%. A CVAP of 33% in a single-member district is 66% of the way towards 50%. That is, 66% of the way towards enabling the group to elect a candidate of their choice. Of course, in choosing a map, there is no requirement that the city choose the map with a district that has the highest Latino CVAP. The worst map for Latinos has a highest Latino CVAP district of only 26%, which is only 52% of the way towards electing a candidate of choice. And if the city chose that map, they would still be in the CVRA safe harbor and could not be sued. In contrast, citywide, Burbank is 21% Latino CVAP, which under proportional ranked choice voting, is 84% of the way towards electing a candidate of choice when three seats are up, and 63% of the way, of the way there, when two seats are up. So, if the goal of the potential plaintiff is to increase the likelihood of electing a candidate of choice by the Latino community, proportional ranked choice voting would be a much better choice than district elections. Now, one problem is that the LA County Register of Voters says he can't do any kind of ranked choice voting unless and until Burbank adopts, quote, "local authority for RCV." That is, adopts either a charter amendment or an ordinance specifying ranked choice voting, and then requests that LA County implement it. So, I would suggest that the city of Burbank start working on such a charter amendment and ordinance in parallel to your current districting procedure, and my organization would be happy to work with city staff on such legislation. Simultaneous with that, the city should explore the option of contracting with a vendor that can do proportional ranked choice voting. Elections Code Section 10402.5 would allow Burbank to do an all-vote-by-male election on the same November General Election Day that you currently use, at least until the county can support ranked choice voting. Before Burbank dismisses such an approach out of hand, due diligence suggests that you at least investigate how much such a procedure would cost you. You may discover that it would cost you a lot less than what LA County currently charges you to run your elections. So, we'd hope that Mr. Gutierrez and his attorney would work with the city to get Burbank to use proportional ranked choice voting as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next caller is Ginny Barnett.
Hello, Jimmy, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Hi, Ginny, you have three minutes.
I agree with Mr. Brick. I'm not, I don't support this. However, my questions come from, we've got a project going up on I-5 and First Street. There's that monstrosity that's going to go up on the Fry's property, that's eight stories, and I'm not sure how that got through the planning board. There's two other projects going up in the city that I know of, or in the planning stages. Have these numbers been placed into the population that we're working with on these maps? And how are we going to know who's going to be renting or purchasing those units? There's also the one on Main Street in the Rancho. What's going to happen in two years? Oh, we're going to have to redo the districts again, because Mr. Gutierrez doesn't like the way they're set up then. And then we build some more, and, oh, we've got to redo the districts again. Isn't that a waste of time and money? And that's what scares me, is that we're going to get caught up in this. We are not LA County. We are not that huge. We are not that big. And we shouldn't be following this type of situation just because one person has got a problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next caller is Simon Hamel.
Hello, Simon, you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, Council. I first want to say, it's important for people to know that this doesn't have to happen. And it's important not to keep that information from the public in the materials that are published. This not having to happen, although it may not be the option that you want, it's important that people don't feel in the end that that choice was hidden from them after they discover, they lose their vote, because as you can see, most people, and what seems to be clear from the data, don't really understand what's going on. You have between 26 and a few hundred people out of 100,000 that really have any idea about this. And what's also clear, now that we can see from the data, although I was pretty sure before, is that everyone, every resident will have at most one-fifth the voting power they used to have. But certainly, never again will any sort of, however you slice it or want to call it, minority group, or ethnic group, or however you divide that up, they will never again have the same power that they used to have, which is, they'll never be the largest voting bloc in any district. So, they will not be able to, say, select one candidate and go, and really back that candidate, although I personally think considering voting in that way is rather a racist idea, because we're all individuals and free thinkers, and we don't always just vote with our, you know, based on our background. But nonetheless, it's just not going to be something that ever occurs again, because there are no districts that reach a threshold. I think if it's possible, I don't know if the city attorney can weigh in on this and explain to people tonight, if would ranked choice voting get us out of this? And if so, couldn't you put the idea of this to a vote of the people, to find out if they really want to do any of these choices? Let them pick all of them? And would that, since there's no lawsuit yet, could you settle with the client, with the plaintiff, for that, settle to say, if we put this to a vote, will you leave us alone? And maybe ask a judge to say, is that an acceptable solution? If we promise to choose one of these choices, or even our old choice, can we delay the lawsuit? That's my only comment and request. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
The next caller is Stephen Hill.
Hello, Stephen, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Stephen Hill. I'm an election consultant with Fair Vote. I want to just, in a sense, correct the record a little bit on some of the information that you've been hearing. You've heard that Register Dean Logan has stated, there's no framework in the state of California for conducting RCV elections, but this is not correct. In 2014, Secretary of State Deborah Bowen published statewide guidelines for how to run RCV elections, and I can email you a link to the PDF on the Secretary of State website. And in fact, other cities, charter cities in California have run ranked choice voting elections, which they wouldn't be able to do if there wasn't some sort of permission in California for charter cities to do this kind of thing. And Register Logan also made clear, even if there isn't a statewide framework, since Burbank is a charter city, it does have the power of a charter city to enact the electoral system of your choice, even if there isn't a statewide framework. But as I mentioned, there actually is one. The other part here is about, Register Logan may not be aware that there is a new pathway to getting RCV voting equipment. There have been some new developments just within the past couple of months. There is a vendor right now, Heart Inner Civic, that is going through registration of its voting equipment, in which they partnered with, paired with a third-party vendor that has the RCV tabulator, and is being incorporated into the Heart Inner Civic system. And another vendor, ESNS, also has incorporated this central tabulator into its system. So, if these two vendors can do it, then that means LA County can also do this, since LA County is also a vendor of its own voting equipment. It doesn't mean there still wouldn't be some work to do, but it means the major lift of adding RCV capability to the LA County voting equipment has already been done, because there is now a third-party partner that can add that to an existing system, and suddenly you have RCV capability built into the equipment. And there would still be some expenses involved, and some coordination involved in integrating the two systems. But the Secretary of State is certifying the system to do that even as we speak. And so, it means that the challenge for LA County would be much, much easier than it previously would have been. So, this would be something to explore with Register Logan in LA County about incorporating this, this third-party vendor called the RCV Resource Center and its central tabulator. The RCV, proportional RCV will accomplish all of the goals of the California Voting Rights Act without the controversy and division of drawing district lines. It also means that voters would still be able to pick multiple candidates like they do now, instead of just picking one candidate and being reduced to a representation by a single representative. So, I encourage you to really keep exploring these other options.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
The next caller is Preston Jordan.
Hello, Preston, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Council. I call from Albany, California, where I am a council member. I'm calling as an individual. And as one of the cities that has recently transitioned to ranked choice voting, and specifically proportional ranked choice voting, the interest in Burbank was brought to my attention, and so I thought it might be useful to share some information. I do appreciate the situation you're in. It's extraordinarily difficult. I led, was one of the main leaders of the effort to go to proportional ranked choice voting in Albany. It was a community effort, in part to correct issues of historic disrepresentation, and also to head off the California Voting Rights Act situation. So, we acted ahead of getting a suit threat, managed to get a measure on the ballot. The measure itself actually drew a suit threat, interestingly enough. We were able to persist in getting that measure passed, as they tend to do. And to the credit of the attorney that filed the suit threat, they subsequently negotiated with the city. And our situation is much like Burbank's, as I understand it, which is that the non-white population is geographically distributed, so it's not possible to draw a district that would definitely provide representation, representational access for those groups. And through analysis, the attorney agreed, and we entered into a settlement agreement to allow the city to use proportional ranked choice voting. We first used it last election, and Latino indigenous candidate was elected for the first time in the city. An Asian candidate was elected. That was the first time in Albany's history that two candidates of color were elected in one election. So, it seems to be accomplishing the goal. We were able to keep the city as one whole unit in doing that. So, I'd be happy to give you any other information offline, if you're interested in talking or connecting. And, yeah, other than that, I think it's a good option. One approach you might consider is retaining that option for the council's discretion, if you should put a measure on the ballot. So, for instance, if you put a measure on to go to districts, that could include authority to go to proportional ranked choice voting at such time as it is deemed feasible, by whatever metrics you choose to include in the ballot. Thank you for your time, and whatever you choose to do, I wish you the best. And again, I feel for your situation. Take care.
Thank you, Preston. Being no further public comment, I'll declare the public comment period closed. And would the representative from the city attorney's office, or the consultant, like to make any further comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'll begin, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson to back cleanup. In the spirit of missing the Dodgers this evening. First, I'll answer the easiest question. Our contract with National Demographics Corporation is $100,000. It was approved by council on January 24. We have a separate contract with Ariano and Associates for $150,000 to conduct the public outreach, which council requested us, actually, it was originally 120. We had to take it up to 150, because council gave staff additional outreach objectives to be able to outreach to the public. This covers the eight community forum, which Ariano is helping to set up and facilitate, and at which Mr. Johnson also attends to cover the mapping. So, that is the financial investment into this process, outside of the large effort that staff is also undertaking. Let me just say, generally, it's been discussed before, but the California Voting Rights Act basically says, under certain circumstances, the law requires cities to transition from at-large to by-district elections. Generally speaking, those circumstances are whether minority groups vote, or a particular minority group, vote similarly. They call it racially polarized voting, but what they mean is, do those groups vote in a similar way? And is an at-large voting system, does it dilute their pattern voting in such a way where they cannot elect their choice of candidates? The evidence for that is varied. Every case has different evidence, and the parties, of course, because they're in litigation, disagree on the evidence. In our staff report for the second hearing, we attached the evidence submitted by Burbank's potential plaintiff, Nick Gutierrez.
And the two parties is Gutierrez and the city?
Potentially, versus the city of Burbank. As one of the speakers mentioned, there is not yet a lawsuit. There is a threatened lawsuit which follows the requirements of the California Voting Rights Act, which was the impetus for this process. So, that's the, that's the argument that got us here today. And there is a disagreement on the evidence, and that's where we've made reference in the past to different cities and different cities' experiences. Santa Monica has gone the furthest in a challenge over their voting system. They have spent millions of dollars. Their case is presently before the California Supreme Court, and scheduled for argument at the end of this month, June 27. It is on the very issue of one of the speakers, about the percentage. He indicated that our highest CVAP for Latino voters is about 33%. That sounds about right. That's called an influence district, and that's the issue in front of the California Supreme Court in the Santa Monica case. It has been years that issue has been litigated. So, the city is confronting this issue out of its own set of circumstances, and that's why we're here. Several other speakers, Mr. Muldoon, who also happens to sit on the city's Charter Review Committee, which is waiting to get some of the work that the council may give it in the second phase that Mr. Johnson mentioned, and that is other types of district arrangements, and whether and what type of measure could be put on a charter election. And so, yes, that goes to the alternatives. So, the current process envisions council considering introduction of an ordinance, considering, and I appreciate former Mayor Gordon's correction of the reference. When I speak here, I do so without a script, and the council introduced an ordinance to consider, this is what we're doing. There is no final action until council not only introduces an ordinance, but also adopts an ordinance. It takes two meetings, and there has to be a map that you all agree on before such an ordinance could be introduced. So, we are in the process, and we are considering the process. So, the options are that council do that, that at the end of this process, if it finds mapping satisfactory to the council, that meets the objectives as we interpret them under the California Voting Rights Act, that the council could introduce and subsequently adopt an ordinance, creating five districts. That would be more or less consistent with the charter, except for the charter's reference to at-large. Otherwise, all the charter's provisions regarding the number of council members, the position of the mayor, and in fact, the council's selection of a mayor are consistent with five districts. The other option is for the question of districts to go on the ballot. That cannot happen quickly enough to eliminate the risk of litigation, or to resolve the matter. And many cities, some, a few, several cities have done that and been sued pending their election. their election. So the election in which this issue could be considered as a charter measure would be March 2024. So there's, even in the process that we've laid out, should the council adopt five districts or should the council give us direction to do it by charter amendment, we have to have all that work done by December. So it's, it's a big lift already. And if we went to five districts, if the council introduced an ordinance and adopted an ordinance going to five districts, that would eliminate the risk of litigation until such time as subsequent measures could be on, put on a charter. Or if the council just adopted the ordinance, the district elections would be effective without a charter amendment. So those are the general options before the council. And oh, with regard to Registrar Logan, we could speculate what options are available to Registrar Logan, but he told us in writing in the letter in the packet that they are not prepared to go to, to do proportional ranked choice voting with their system. They've identified a multi-step process to be able to do that. Redondo Beach enacted a charter amendment to go to proportional ranked choice voting by districts. Again, they did not get around going to district elections, but they are implementing proportional ranked choice voting within districts. They're not able to consolidate with the county and the county has not indicated that they're even preparing to start that process for Redondo Beach. That's a different issue. The city has already consolidated elections with the county. That's our current process. And so, oh, and with regard to the city of Albany, the speaker's no longer on the phone to ask him, but I believe Albany is in one of the counties where they already conduct proportional ranked choice voting in the county election, which is different than Los Angeles County. With that, I'll turn it over to-
I believe that's Alameda County, yes? Albany? I think so. Yeah.
I'll take your word for it.
Yep. That's great. So lots of good questions. A couple of questions came up. One person mentioned the, the app that tells you which district area and all that. Actually, LA County has that right on their website. It's one of the great things about being in LA County. So you know, the clerk can put a link on the city website to the clerk, to the county website and type in your address and boom, everything from your water district to your US senator are listed there. So pretty handy. Definitely encourage that kind of thing, but the county does it nice and easy. That speaker also asked about turnout impact. Back when jurisdictions had non-consolidated elections, there were a number of studies of do going to districts encourage turnout. And what most have found is that there was a short-term bump. So the change in elections led to a bump, kind of the new system. And after one or two election cycles, it went back to normal turnout levels. Now that we're consolidated, there's no turnout impact. You know, if you think through it logically, you know, if, if there's a presidential election and someone decides they're not going to vote, whatever's happening at the city, whether the city council is by district or not, is not going to drive whether they turn out if the presidential election doesn't or the gubernatorial election doesn't. So, so this doesn't impact turnout significantly one way or another. It may, may impact roll-off lower on the ballot, but it doesn't impact original turnout. A couple of questions, just to flag on the $100,000, that's the not to exceed amount too. It'll likely come in well below that. And then there was a question, it's a common one about with the, the projects under development, will we have to redraw every time a new project's built? And no, you just have to redraw after every, every decennial census. So the census will happen 2030, you'll have to update the lines in 2031 and then every 10 years after that. The courts recognize populations change. We were-
I, I would just add to Doug's comment there that each of those projects are, I don't, with maybe the exception of one map, none of them fall within the same district. And there are 800 units on one side of town, 500 units on another side of town. Those numbers, once occupied, are not enough to substantially change the population balance. Talking maybe 1,000 or two in each of these districts is 21,000. So it's a relatively small number.
But in addition, we can project, one of the things I saw in the early slide was projected growth, yes?
Yes. Within that roughly plus or minus 5%, you can under-populate a district if you know it's going to grow over time, certainly. The other piece, and this is a big takeaway for the public, there was a comment, the NCA people, and I'm sure other people thought this too, if not, they didn't get their map in quite yet. It's not too late. So certainly, you know, as maps come in, we'll be adding them to the community forum discussions and obviously they'll be part of the discussion when we come back here for the, for the real selection of the map.
And the second deadline is July 7th, I believe.
Correct. Exactly. So, and the sooner residents get them in, the sooner we'll be able to add them to the forum discussions. And then we already talked about the, the Latino voting strength. One thing I do want to mention, just because this has come up in Palm Desert where they went to ranked choice voting, and actually now the council's trying to get out of it, is this, what, what they don't like there is the fact that they thought they would still get to vote for five. And you don't. With ranked choice voting, you get to vote for one per election. So just to be clear, so if you had ranked choice voting, you'd get to vote for one every two years. So everyone would be voting for two council members, but you don't get to vote for five because you list your rankings, but the moment your ranking kicks in, then this stops. So if your, if your candidate gets 33 and a third plus one votes, you're not, you know, they, they don't go on to your second vote. So that, so not to say there are, there are certainly advantages of ranked choice voting that many people have talked about, but to the residents said, can I keep my five? At-large is the only system that does that. Ranked choice doesn't keep you your five. That was the surprise when they, in Palm Desert, they're like, well, I voted for these two, yeah, but only the first one counted because that, that used up all the, your vote. That's all, I mean, it makes sense logically too. How would Latinos at 21% be able to vote in someone in a ranked choice voting system? Well, it's because everyone gets one vote and there's three seats. So the majority group uses up their vote and then there's still a third seat to open there that they can elect to. Palm Desert. Yeah. Yeah. So there, and we could talk all day and for weeks about ranked choice voting, but I did want to flag, there was a question about can I keep my five votes? And then there were other questions about ranked choice voting, so I wanted to separate those two issues for clarity. So that's all I have. But the main takeaway I did want to emphasize is that it's not too late. If people still want to draw maps and they see options that aren't up there, or whatever focus map you choose tonight, if they want to refine them and clean them up, somewhat like Mr. Don, you talked about with 128, you would fine tune it. Residents who want to fine tune any of your focus maps are encouraged to do that and submit it by July 7th.
Okay.
One, one other comment, Mr. Mayor, is that Mr. Yigparian's map looks very similar to 123 with maybe some tweaks to District 3. So.
Yeah, I caught that. Okay. Uh, yes, so let's move on to, don't go too far, sir. Let's do some council questions of staff or the consultant. And because this is a public hearing, I want to do all the questions first so then we can close the hearing and go into deliberation.
Right. Mr. Mayor, would you like to do questions first about like the process of the, this whole process and then dive into the maps themselves?
Yeah, let's, let's wait on the maps for now. I want to see, because I still have some questions about some of the public comment and some of the processes. So let's do that first.
I have a lot of questions, so why don't you guys go first?
I have just a couple real quick. Um, yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. No? All right. Let me, let me do, let me do mine real quick because there was a couple of public comments that I wanted to cover. You said, actually before public comment, when you gave your presentation, you said when Councilmember Perez moved, it affected a bunch of the maps. Now later on, you mentioned that it wasn't set, it's not a preset, but you can click in and overlay our addresses. Is there a possibility then that people actually overlaid our addresses and drew Councilmember Perez out of a district trying to give each of us one of five? And then when she moved, she threw that out the window. Is that possible, what happened there?
It's possible, yes. Or, or they may have been, there's lots of different scenarios where they were considering where the councilmembers lived is drawing the maps and that threw them off, which is why I want to emphasize it's not too late.
Gotcha.
Draw new maps.
Um, do you know where we live personally? Like if I point to it on the map, can you figure it out?
I, I have your addresses, yeah. I mean, that's how I made that map with the block by block.
I see.
I don't think he's personally geocoded your, your house in his head, no.
Well, here's my question. Here's my question. A couple of people have mentioned map 123. Can you look at map 123 real quick?
Yeah.
Are there four council members in District 5 on map 123? Two. Two? Okay. Map 123 on Group A, you have the overlay? Where's?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Okay. Okay.
Yeah. So, so just-
Yeah.
Just to clarify, in map 123, there are two council members in District 4 and with the new address, there are two council members in District 5.
Okay.
So, so it just changes the new address.
I think it's three.
Oh, three.
Yeah, there would be three of us in 5 and one in 4.
Oh, right. Correct. Yeah, so there's two in two and with the new address, it'll be one in three.
All right. Um, okay. Some of our council members live very close to each other. Okay. I wanted to, oh, to the speaker, Garen, if you could, email those directly to us. You can just send it to us. That's citycouncil@burbankca.gov. Don't worry about trying to get it. Just send an email. The, putting it on the ballot, a number of people question, asked putting it on the ballot. And Mr. City Attorney, you mentioned that there is a two-word discrepancy in the charter and that we have a charter review committee. So is it possible for us to do a process where council adopts an ordinance well within the timeframe of the lawsuit and yet still puts something on the ballot in March for the voters to decide? Is that a, are we doubling up on work? Is it redundant? Or what would be the option there?
That's a possibility.
How would that look? Would that be to just clear up the language of the charter? I, I had heard a previous meeting, we could even put something to the voters where we go to four districts and a separate elected mayor.
Well, so, so that's the process that Mr. Johnson already went over. So we're bringing you, the current schedule is to bring maps to continue this process and narrow it down to maybe three choices the night that you are considering introduction. Pick those choices. Our recommendation is you pick five districts. We find one with five districts that doesn't conflict with the charter, but then there's currently a whole second phase to consider other methods, other configurations which are not consistent with the charter. Four districts and an at-large mayor, six districts and an at-large mayor, seven districts. I mean, there's many different formulations that would supplant, if approved by the voters, the five district arrangement.
Okay.
So if there's not enough votes to adopt anything, but there's still a willingness to put something on the charter, then we would do that.
Okay.
So we're not asking you to make that decision, but we're bringing you options. The closest method to comply with both the charter and the CVRA is to do five districts.
Right. And we can do that by ordinance within the timeframe of the lawsuit and-
Well, we're already outside the timeframe of the lawsuit. We, we're no longer in a safe harbor. That expired about 60 days ago.
So what hap, every day that goes on, what are we looking for?
Well, we're, with the city is working in good faith with, with the community to complete a very rigorous process to involve all community interest groups in coming up with a sensible plan. So we are following the spirit and the letter of the law and that's all you can do.
Right.
We haven't received further contact, but we believe we're operating in good faith. So there are all of those options. There are no options yet foreclosed. And as Mr. Johnson explained, we have a whole second timeframe. So if the council is unable to agree on a five district plan that it is willing to adopt by ordinance, there is still time to come up with any other formulation, including five districts, that could go on a charter election. But we have the, the time now, working in good faith, to see if we can come up with a five district scheme. And we have until, I don't know the exact date and I'm not going to ask anybody else to give an exact date, but we, before the end of November, we need to know where we are to finish up a charter measure to get on the charter. We have, we have like nine, little less, plus or minus 90 days to give the county the language we need on the March 2024 primary for a charter election. That would get the new system in place in time so that everything's set for the November 2024 election.
Okay. So if there was a potential for us to do a charter amendment, we still have to get our ducks in a row early enough to make sure we know what we're doing.
And we have time for all of that right now.
Okay.
So we're, we're on a schedule to bring you options that are more or less, under the government code, consistent with our charter, with the exception of the word at-large, the phrase at-large. And that's compliance, complete compliance. And, and it's up to the council to be satisfied with the process, but all of the other options mentioned by speakers, putting it on the charter, all of those, none of those are foreclosed by introduction of an ordinance.
Okay.
And a charter amendment supersedes any ordinances that are adopted as well. So we don't have to go back and fix the ordinance. The charter remedies all of that.
Okay. Who, Registrar Logan sent us a letter about ranked choice voting and that basically we couldn't do it.
He said it's possible. They're not presently prepared to administer an election because the law is different for LA County than it is for primarily Bay Area counties that already conduct ranked choice voting. And it will take time. That's the short answer.
Sure. We don't, in LA County, we don't elect our registrar or voters. So where does, where does the registrar get their authority and where does that change in the law need to come from? Is that the county assessor? Is that the county board? Is it from the governor? The things that-
I, I don't know precisely what his opinion is based on.
Oh, okay. So I see.
I can address that.
Oh, please, please.
What he's referring to is the, it's state, so state law. And there, there actually was a bill that would have allowed general law city, your charter, but would have allowed general law cities to go to cumulative voting or, or ranked choice voting or whatever and laid out the guidelines that he, he's requesting for how a county implement it. It passed the legislature and Governor Newsom vetoed it. And it didn't give much of an explanation other, but he comes from a ranked choice vote, vote city, so that may be part of it. But he vetoed it, so now the question is, can it, can they do a deal where that law would pass and he would sign it? Or do we just have to wait for the next governor?
So then how come places like Albany and-
Their, their charters. So, so they bypassed that and wrote it into their charter. It's an extensive set of like how you implement the election. It's all the rules, you know, that normally in, are set by state law that govern how clerks and registrars run elections. The, the charter cities have to write that into their charter and adopt ordinances to implement it all locally.
But Alameda County doesn't do ranked choice voting just for them? Or does it, it's available to everybody? I don't understand how they can write it in the charter if the county's not allowed to do it by state law.
So the county has, so some of the cities have written it into their charter, Berkeley, Oakland and those. And then the county developed the technology to implement it for them. And Dean Logan kind of hints at that in his letter, saying if you adopt the rules, then I can look at it. But we have the challenges, as the attorney mentioned, we're LA County adopting, you know, all the election systems in the county to implement what one or two cities want is a lot easier in Alameda than it is in LA.
So there's only one city so far in LA County that has adopted ranked choice voting, whereas in Alameda County, Oakland and you said Berkeley, I think?
Oakland, Berkeley, San Leandro.
Those are like the biggest cities now, Alameda County.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And the one in LA County runs, as the attorney mentioned, runs its own elections in a very unique situation.
Okay. Okay. Lastly, Santa Monica is currently at the California State Supreme Court. If, if we, if we do anything with a lawsuit, would our-
in a very unique situation.
Okay, okay. Lastly, um, Santa Monica is currently at the California State Supreme Court. If, if we, if we do anything with a lawsuit, would our, would our lawsuit go to the Supreme Court, or would go to an appeals court? How, how does that process?
We would start it at the beginning.
Okay.
If we were sued, we'd be sued in local trial court, and whoever loses would likely appeal that to the State Court of Appeals.
Okay.
And whoever loses that, or is otherwise unhappy with a split decision, could appeal to the California Supreme Court. By that time, presumably, there would be a decision from the California Supreme Court. If it was a clear...
In the Santa Monica case?
Correct. If there was a clear decision, it may, um, uh, obviate or eliminate the possibility that we would ever even go that far. It may create clear enough law that it would settle any dispute we have about our local facts.
So, the Santa Monica case may or may not have a direct impact on what we're doing.
It depends. It depends on who wins, it depends upon whether the decision is clear and definitive, or whether it lays out some test, or whether it remands it back to the Court of Appeals for further, you know, consideration and findings. So, it, it, it's just too, not clear.
Okay. All right, so now I gotta watch the Dodger game and the Santa Monica case, all right.
And don't forget the LEFC game.
Right, okay, great. Pay attention to all of it.
I'm missing that right now.
Uh, okay, that's actually all of my questions. Councilor Mullins?
I'll go. So, earlier, one of the speakers, I believe it was Mr. Donahue, said he submitted fifty maps. Are those hard copies? And if they are, if the city, they've been submitted to the city clerk's office? I, I was just wondering, how many hard copies do you have of maps that have been submitted to the city clerk's office? And if you need to look it up, I can go on to...
Right, we'll just need a moment because we did get some that were duplicated.
Okay. And with that, I just would like to know when would we be able to see the ones, the hard copies? Because I, today, tonight was my first night to actually see any of the maps, so it'd be interesting to see what other maps have been submitted.
Yes, so we'll be posting everything to the project website, and Mr. Donahue's map, and, um, tomorrow.
Okay.
And then as maps come in and we get them processed, we'll get those posted right away as well.
Maybe Mr. Johnson can speak to the phased way in which, so there was a deadline for submission and posting of the maps for this hearing, and there's a secondary deadline, so if they miss the deadline, we're, we're trying to bring things in a phased approach.
Exactly, the statutory requirement is they have to be posted for public viewing seven days before the council can consider them. And so, that's, it's a cutoff. Now, that, the council isn't considering them at the community forums, so we can post them day by day at the forums. They just have to be then be posted, all the maps have to be posted seven days before your next hearing, where you have a council hearing and, and vote. So, that's where the July seventh deadline comes from. And it is a weird, people go, "Wait, that's not seven days." It's a weird state deadline, because the deadline is on us to process and the city to post the map, it's not on the resident to get it in seven days in advance. So, that's why it's a few more than seven days is when we have to set the deadline. Because the worst thing that can happen is they submit the map on time and we don't get it posted. So, that's why, um, we can post, and they can appear and be discussed that night at a community forum, as opposed to a formal council hearing, it has to be posted seven days in advance.
Okay, thank you. And if they are duplicate maps, so let's say the fifty that Mr. Donahue talked about, and if they are duplicate, um, and but comes, or they come from different individuals, would we know that these are fifty duplicate coming from different individuals? So, this way, because I know you eliminate the duplicates, basically, because if it's one multiplied, then you're only going to post one. So, I want to clear, just to get an understanding, how many people out there actually want the same map? And it helps me as a council member to know what the majority of the residents wants to see what their districts would look like.
Yes, so when we come back after the next round of forums, when people can weigh in on the different maps, we'll have a full report on, you know, how many people submitted maps, how many people in, at each forum, or by email, or any method endorsed each map. You're exactly right, we're not going to say, if someone, if fifty people turn in the exact same map, we're not going to make maps one twenty-one through one seventy. We're going to make map one twenty-one and say, "These fifty people endorsed it."
Okay, great. Yeah, I, I'd be interested to know how many actually did that. I wanted to address some of the speakers and their concerns, because I, I think the perception is out there, and I, I hear that quite, you know, often, is, "Why is council doing this? And why is the city moving?" And I appreciate the city attorney repeating it, and we ask you to repeat it over and over, and I think it's very important that we do repeat it, and the public understands that this is not something we on council decided, "Let's put it on the agenda, let's move forward, let's do it." I personally have been aware, as the former city clerk, about districts for the last eight, nine years perhaps, for me, you know, it seemed like it's been a long time, but, and it's something I prayed for, and I wish that it never happens in the city of Burbank, but I know it was something was going to happen sooner or later. So, when we did receive the letter, I, I am personally not in favor of dividing our city. I like the at-large elections, I think it speaks for itself. However, it's something, and we repeat it again, it's something beyond our control. Now, can we take this to court? Can we fight it? Sure. How much money can we spend on it? You know, again, we use Santa Monica as an example, because they're the only city that stuck it out for over twenty-six, twenty-seven million dollars in total, probably attorney fees, and who knows what's going to end up being. Is it something that we want to do and use our general fund and public fund to fight in court over districts? I think, you know, I would want to hear from all of you when that time comes, if it does come, and we say, "Okay, well, let's go ahead and let's tell them we are not going to comply if we are willing to, and all of you will be behind us, to spend that kind of money to fight it in court." So, it's weighing in your options and seeing what is the best for our community and the best for our residents? Is it to spend the funds, or is it to go to districts? And we are taking this very seriously, and we're evaluating all the input that we receive from the public. And I want to address Cheryl, you mentioned, "What can we do?" You, you're more engaged and involved, yes, you've been coming to council meetings, and I do appreciate it. What you can do is exactly what you're doing now, and then also going out and spreading and talking to your neighbors and friends, and ask them to go online, submit maps, and get involved, participate in a public hearing, and ask questions. And perhaps take some of this discussion that we have tonight to pass it on, or let them know to go back and listen to the council meetings, so they're more educated. I totally agree, from a lot of the speakers, yes, putting those yard signs don't give you much, you know, you say "district", what does that mean? And let's face it, most of people are busy, and they're not going to stop and pay attention to everything that's happening in the city, until it hits home, and then they start paying attention. And so, if we all do our job, and the city's doing the best they can do to get the word out, we put a lot of pressure on staff to do marketing, and I see it everywhere, I hear a lot of people tell me, "I got the letter", or "I've seen it on Facebook." So, maybe all of us need to be more active to put it on Facebook and, or social media, just in general, and speak about it. I appreciate former Mayor Brick and former Mayor Gordon and their input on the information that, you know, that they have given us, and I know they spoke about it before. So, I, I have a question to the city attorney. I know we're saying, once council adopt the maps, does this have to be by majority or for fifth vote to adopt?
It would be a majority vote.
Thank you. Yeah, that question came up, do all of you have to agree, all five of you must agree, or just the majority? So, it will be, so everybody would understand that, you know, you need three votes to pass one map. So, of course, council will do their best to, to agree on the map that it needs to be passed.
I mean, I'd like a consensus, I don't want us to sit here and bicker, so.
Yeah. Well, I just need to clarify, yes, it would be, of course, best that all five of us agree, but this is important. And then also to Mr. Yip Karian, I really encourage you to apply, not apply, but submit the map. The maps, I know the mayor asked you to send it to us, but I would like also the public to see it. It's important for the Armenian community to participate in this process and to let us know, you know, what your thoughts are about what your districts are going to look like here in the city of Burbank. Let me stop here and allow Councilmember Takaha Shid to ask her questions, and I'll be back.
Councilmember Mullins, would you like the data?
Thank you.
The city clerk's office received three maps physically across the counter. One map was submitted on behalf of forty-six people, so it was a duplicate. Forty-one of the forty-six that it was submitted on behalf of were submitted anonymously, so no name attached to them.
Is that in, in the packet?
No.
Where is that map?
It's not a map, it's data, we have the... Councilmember Mullins asked how many maps were physically received across the counter at the city clerk's office.
They're hard copies.
Hard copy maps.
That's Mr. Donahue's map, so all those, all those came in within less than seven days.
Oh, I see, so it'll be in the next batch?
Yes.
Exactly.
That's correct. One was submitted on time, the balance were received after the deadline, and will be included in the next meeting.
So, three maps, three different maps, but one was, came from forty-six different individuals?
Well, it was, forty-six copies were dropped off, but they were anonymous, so you can draw your own inferences.
Okay, all forty-six of them were anonymous, or...
Forty-one of the forty-six were submitted anonymously.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
I, I, I think you all asked some of the questions that I had, and I had a lot of the same questions that the public has at the beginning, because it is a confusing process, and I'm grateful to all of you that are here, bearing through it with us and learning more, and I hope you do share this along with your neighbors. One of the speakers asked, "What are the consequences if we go to litigation and we lose? What are the consequences to, to the city?" I know that's a very broad...
We get an order to go back through the process and create districts. And if we're unable to do it, then it's Groundhog Day.
So, that is essentially the consequence, plus we have spent a egregious amount of money, most likely, on it, right?
I don't believe any city, any city that we're aware of has gone to court and spent less than several million dollars. Santa Monica right now holds the record, I believe it's six to eight million dollars actually spent. The attorney fee demand at the trial court, I understand, was twenty-two million. They won at appeals court, but then that went up to the Supreme Court. So, that attorney demand is still hanging out there, but out of pocket is somewhere maybe just south of eight million, maybe more, since they're, they're scheduled for oral argument on the twenty-seventh.
Thank you for that. I just want to make sure that question was answered, and I know it's a hard pill to swallow, because I'm right there with you all. And I think the only thing I will say to Councilwoman Mullins' point, echo a lot of what you said, and I am going into this with an open mind, even though I, I did feel a little uneasy. Born and raised in Magnolia Park, but I've signed up to represent my whole city, you know, and I will go into this with an open mind, because that is our job. We, we have to, because we're, you know, it's on, it's on our shoulders to make sure that what our residents want is represented. And all I will say is, I, at the end of the rope, I will not support anything that dilutes the Latino vote, or the vote of any protected class, and that's all I will say on that.
Mr. Mayor, I need to, um, thank you. The conversation prompted another question that I know, um, if, I, I think I heard also a lot of you say about, talk about, "Well, let's go out to the voters and ask the voters to vote for it." And that is something we definitely going to explore. I don't think this council, again, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think we're open to the idea, you know, and, and we're looking at it, let the voters decide what happens. Let's assume it doesn't pass, and I'm going to turn around and ask the city attorney again. Let's assume we go out and ask for districts, and the voters said, "Absolutely not." What can happen after that? What would be the outcome results, or what can happen?
There's still an allegation that we're not in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act, so that lawsuit is still possible.
And I would add, I would add to that, too, that there have been cities that did not have much record of racially polarized voting, and they put it to voters, and that election was polarized. So, there wasn't much evidence historically against them, but all of a sudden, putting it to voters created the evidence that then lost the case for it.
Oh, wow.
So, that's, yeah.
So, um, it's not that I personally, because I, I believe in democracy, I want the voters to tell me what I should do. But it's, that was the, a lot of the questions that we asked the city attorney is, "Okay, well, we'll take it out to the voters, A, they say, 'No, we're all good, and we did our job, and when you hear 'no', you still can get sued, and we can still be back at this, and, and it's a chance we probably be taken, if that's the route we want to go." So, it's yes or no, we can take a chance. And, and Councilmember Press said something earlier, and that is, you know, or actually part of the discussion, along with some of you, said, "Well, I want somebody that represents me, and, you know, I want to vote for all five members." And I totally agree, because you feel that relationship and connection, you put that person in office, and this is something that you feel like they're speaking on your behalf. But even with the district election, all of us will have to vote for all the projects in the city. So, we cannot only vote for projects for the areas that we have been, you know, representing or got elected to represent. Our vote will be at-large for any project that comes to the city. So, there's something good to that, because we're still held responsible to the entire community for our votes. So, I just wanted to add that, it just started some thoughts, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I have several questions, and usually I like to ask my questions in order of topic, but I've been taking so many notes, I apologize if I kind of jump around with different things. Yeah, okay. Going back to where you were referring to Palm Desert, I was, you mentioned about the progress, the ranked choice voting being pulled back because folks were troubled that they were voting for one, one person. And the reason why is because they're in districts, right? So, they're districted, I just looked it up, they're districted and they're ranked choice, right?
So, they're unusual, there's one single-member district, and then the rest of the city has a population for four districts, but it elects at-large, or elects, so, so four council members come from District Two. So, each election, yeah, so it's a weird...
So, the whole thing's...
It works as a...
The whole thing is different, okay. So, it's not even, like, even comparable to what we're, I mean...
Within the four, eighty percent of the city works as an at-large ranked choice voting.
Okay, I see, okay, all right.
Yeah.
And that's an unusual setup, okay. While we were talking about the, moving the elections to presidential election years, the local elections to presidential election years, it occurred to me that if we stagger our council elections, two and three, every two years, right, so twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight, et cetera, that two, or, two or three of the council members will be elected on a presidential year, and the other ones will be elected on a midterm. Which, wouldn't that in and of itself be a consistent kind of either disadvantage or advantage to one set of council members, because they're going to have a higher number of people voting for them, or a lower number of people? Because midterm turnout is much less than a presidential turnout, especially if it's a controversial president turnout, right? So, would that then also be problematic if we are only, we had certain districts that only voted in presidential years, and certain districts that only voted in midterm years? So, those districts would have consistent higher and lower turnouts for those elections?
The, what you're describing definitely would happen.
Okay.
The, it's not a problem, though, because the council election for District One is, everyone's on the same page. It might be a high turnout year, a low turnout year, but all the candidates in that seat are the same, running under the same situation. So, it doesn't advantage or disadvantage any candidates. It just means that one seat will be elected with a lot more votes than another, but you'll have that anyways. Even two seats are up in the same year, if you have different turnout rates in different parts of the city, then you'll have different numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, the phenomenon you described definitely will happen. It's just not a, a problem. Um, where, where it might, well, I doubt it would influence turnout though would be if you had a citywide issue, some measure you were putting on the ballot as well, the districts that also had council elections that year might have a little bit of advantage and more, more attention to city issues. But that's, that's the place it would come in.
But it's, it has been proven that certain, you know, when you have higher number of voters and when you have lower numbers of voters, different demographics show up to vote. That has been proven.
Yeah.
And so if we have districts that have low turnout, that demographic will be different to show up to vote than a higher turnout. So we may even see the dilution or the racial preferences shift on those different districts based just because one is on a presidential election and one's midterm because of the voter turnout itself. And when we're looking at that...
I mean, yeah, yes, historically, but I will say, we should have more votes than I did in the primary and I'm still mad about it.
Yeah, but because she's better, I'm just kidding. But I just, I just want to make su... I was just kidding, um, just kidding, folks. Um, so, uh, I, I really just want to make sure that we're not putting, as we're looking at it, we're not, I, Jerry, I mean, gerrymandering is how you can make a district a certain way based on the voters. But there also could be thoughts about like, well, this district has certain kinds of voters that would prefer, it'd be easier to get somebody in during a midterm, so let's make that a midterm district and this make a, uh, you know? So I just, I don't mean that, that's a concern.
Yeah, because if it's at large, you spread that out.
Exactly.
Because then you can choose to run in it, in a...
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and the law, someone anticipates that if, if we, primarily if we have two vacant seats, if one of them has more lower turnout voters, we'll, we'll lean towards putting that on the presidential year.
Yeah.
To try to boost those, that low turnout.
Yeah.
The higher turnout district doesn't need to be on the presidential year as much as the lower turnout.
Yeah. So that is a concern for me. I, I have a similar mind as, as, uh, Councilmember Press that I'm open-minded to all this and I want to, but my, my, it's a really make sure it's fair and that what we're doing is actually improving, improving the voice of all of our folks in the city or, or balancing it to be fairer if, if it isn't balanced. Um, and so I'm just considering a lot of the different options. So speaking of polarized voting and diluted voting, um, this is, I think, a city attorney question. Did the plaintiff provide, uh, evidence that there currently is polarized or diluted voting? Or they just made the claim? I mean, their own version of the evidence or did they just make the claim?
For us.
For us, yeah.
Yes.
In our case, yeah.
Yes, it was attached to the staff report at the last hearing.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure that that was clear. Both the polarized voting and the diluted voting are in that report?
They didn't, I don't believe they provided very strong evidence on dilution, but they identified specific, uh, contests that they believe showed the polarized voting.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure that was out there.
Just a quick follow-up.
Yeah.
But we disagree with a lot of their data. That's, you mentioned that earlier, there's contention there.
We do not agree with their data.
Um, let's see. Uh, so back to the ranked choice voting really quickly. We, we covered a lot of material that I was going to ask, so thank you all for that. And everyone knows, everyone knows how I stand on that particular issue in general. Um, different kinds of ranked choice voting have different outcomes. But, um, I'm wondering, uh, Redondo Beach, when they made their ordinance for ranked choice voting, they decided to look into doing it themselves. Am I correct on that? Their, the city themselves is going to take it on and do the ranked choice voting for their own city alone without?
They, they already ran their own elections.
They did, okay, they already did before, okay.
They're not consolidated, they're running their own elections there.
Right. Would it be possible for us as a city to say, we would like to, uh, pass an ordinance that we are interested in ranked choice voting as soon as it's available at the county level? So that when it gets implemented, it's, I mean, immediately available for us to use and we don't have to then go through a process and that way we can kind of look at it now. Is that, is that possible? Something we can consider doing during?
Uh, I'm going to cede the answer and Doug's going to finish it. There are multiple types of ranked choice voting.
Okay.
I would not encourage you to speculate that at some unknown future date, you're automatically going to put some method in place that we haven't even studied.
Got it.
In other words, I think it's a much more complicated issue.
Right.
That you wouldn't want that to automatically happen without knowing at that time what the impacts are.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Great. But in theory, it could mean...
What others have done is written into the, in your case, a charter, the, the flexibility for the council to do something by ordinance later on.
Right.
But to agree with the city attorney, you have no idea what options will be out there or what the county system will do until you...
So let me rephrase that. Is there, is there a way that we could smooth the way so that it's already kind of ready? Hey, we've got a new, new council member who just sat with us. Vice Mayor.
A note that Vice Mayor is here for the meeting, please.
Yes. So that, uh, I just, I think that we're already looking at our elections, we're already here. And so, uh, I would hate to get through all this process and then LA County brings in ranked choice voting and then we go through this whole over again. So just kind of trying to find a way to like smooth this.
So we could, uh, draft our language so that it doesn't preclude ranked choice voting.
Okay, great, yeah.
If I may add, I, I think having gone through eleven elections in the past and all the training and the changes that goes through the county when they did, when we consolidated and they changed our election, I would not personally recommend, and I know the city clerk probably, you know, is going to look into this as well, but to put ourselves in a box early on and to say what type of election early on that we would look into until we know what would be offered at the time when we're ready and the county is ready. Uh, because things can really vary and we'll have to change the ordinance or it, it ties the city clerk's hands to come back to us and say, you know, I found something else out there. The problem has been is, um, there were lots of vendors available and certified by the state to actually conduct elections and all these vendors disappeared when the, when the county started consolidating. And this is what they're going through now, is more and more getting certified. I think one of them called in today and said he's a, an election vendor. Um, and they're more and more getting certified. So it might be opening a new, um, process and new voting method just to help out and... We'll get there eventually when it's available. I'd love to take a look at it myself.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one of the speakers asked, uh, how much, what, what the cost comparison would be for going back to running our own election versus, uh, the amount that we pay to the county to run our elections? And I know that number, I don't need a specific number, but just kind of a rough comparison if we, if we have a back of the napkin knowledge of that.
Well, and I did want to flag that because it's not really a cost issue. What'll happen is you would be running your own election on election day and someone would go to vote at the county precinct and your ballots would not be there.
Right.
You know, they mentioned doing an all mail ballot, so they would have to go home and go back through their mail and find the city mailing in the midst of all the county mailings, because you all know how many county mailings you get. Find the city ballot and fill that out because it would be a completely separate ballot and it would not be available at the county precinct. So that's the real hitch.
So there would actually be two separate elections happening at the same time with two ballots? So people have to fill out both of them and that...
Well, and the old...
And, and deliver them in two different places, basically.
Yeah, and the, and to that caller's point, the only way it gets cost comparative is if the, your city election is by mail. So there wouldn't be a place to go.
Okay.
And, and Councilmember Takahashi, we probably would never want to hold, um, the city election on the same date as the general consolidated election. People will be definitely confused with the ballots and did I vote or not? As we had it in the past, you know, in, in April, we had the primary and the general. Um, so those were off cycle from the county.
Yeah. And if I recall correctly, we moved to, uh, being at the same time as the presidential elections because of a state law, right? That was saying that we needed to because of voter turnout. So we kind of have to stay there in a way without, I mean, we can't go, decide to move it to another day. Or we could, but it would be, I don't even know if that, how that even would work. So I'm not even going to ask that question. Let's see. Somebody answered, we're already good. Oh, somebody, um, there are a few, a few people who spoke who, uh, said that they're new to this, it's confusing. And I totally agree, it's a lot going on, it's confusing. And there is the website, there is information, but it's a lot of information. And I'm wondering, maybe I missed it, but I'm wondering if maybe there's a quick, like, one sheet bullet point thing that people can get a rough, just boop, 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 boom, what's going on that's available to the community so that they can, you know, without having to dig deep, they just kind of get a sense of what's happening? Is that available or can we make that if it's not available?
Well, I, I think the city's webpage is broken up in a very practical tiered method. But there's a risk of oversimplifying and then them not understanding, really, this is fairly complex process.
Yeah.
So, um, we could put effort into yet another type of outreach, but I think the city's website already presents, you know, just the maps alone is its, its whole separate tier. This is a, this packet that Mr. Johnson prepared this evening is a pretty good overview, but it's probably twenty slides.
Yeah.
I mean, at this point, the information is getting quite voluminous.
Yeah.
Even the overview of how we got here is more than a page.
Yeah.
So in terms of the council member wanting us to continue to repeat that this wasn't a city council voluntary initiative, that we're really responding to a threat, a legal threat, that in and of itself is its own page on that, that website.
Right. Yeah, to the folks who mentioned it's complicated, I totally agree with you. And if there's an area that either doesn't make sense or you need some clarification or you think we could phrase it better to make it more clear or something, please reach out to us and let us know where you're stuck and so that we know kind of what's, what's the sticky point. And we could maybe, you know, maybe massage the language a little bit or add a little bit more information or, or put, put it in smaller paragraphs so it's easier to parse or something like that.
And, and that is the goal of the forum, supposed to get feedback on the maps. But we'll start with how we got here and, you know, as you said, Councilmember, repeat, repeat, repeat.
Yeah.
So, and that, people can certainly answer question or ask questions and we'll discuss it at those forums too.
And I'm not going to speak for everybody else, but I am totally willing to repeat it a million times. So I will say it over and over and over again. You can meet with me and we can talk about it. You can meet with each one of us and get our own versions of it. You can meet with the staff too. And we will all repeat it a million times with, with patience and we know it's, we know it's challenging, so. Um, and just to reiterate and repeat, this is the first step of maps. We have at least, we have several other steps of maps. We have community forums, we've got two more public hearings, we've got more options to, to need to submit. So this is just the beginning of a, of the map process, okay? Let's see. Oh, I just want to, I wanted to touch base on the comment of Mr. Brick about our, uh, the deciding vote. I just wanted to clarify that really quick. Member, yeah. So beginning of the meeting, when we all say we're here, we've, from the very first meeting, we kind of go between here and present, here and present. And it's just like internal little joke. And so by the time it gets to the fifth person, this, who's going to, what's, what are they going to say? Mr. Vice Mayor wasn't here, so we had two here's, two presents. And so we were just joking that he would come and, are you here or present?
I'm present.
Oh. See, so he broke the tie. So that's what we were talking about. I apologize for, for making that joke in a public way that wasn't clear. I mean, it was before the meeting started, but it wasn't clear what happened. And so I apologize for, for, you know, any confusion.
We don't know how we're going to vote on this at all.
No, we're not even, at least speaking for myself, I'm nowhere even close to like where I can even say anything.
Councilmember Takahashi, we do have some figures for you when you're ready.
Oh, sweet, okay, let's do it.
Okay, so in 2017, our primary election cost one hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five, I'm rounding. The general was two hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-one. That represented, oh, the primary, we had ten thousand, nine hundred and two ballots submitted. And in the general, we had eleven thousand, five hundred and, we'll call it change, five hundred and fifty-five. In 2022, we actually paid significantly less because we had only one election and it came out to two hundred and twelve, two four one, with a significant uptake in participation to the percentage pointed fifty-two point two-three. In 2020, we had eighty percent, because it was a presidential election, we had eighty percentage points, we'll just round it there, of eligible voters participated.
Wow, okay.
Eighty percent. So consolidation under Senate Bill four one five definitely helped the participation factor.
Mm-hmm. And if we had eighty percent, just, if we had eighty percent of the people participate in our local election and we ran it, that would be a much higher cost to run, I would imagine.
Well, the problem was getting eighty percent. If you look at the numbers I just quoted, you, ten thousand, nine hundred for the primary?
Mm-hmm.
And eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-five. That's pretty dismal.
Great, okay, thank you for those numbers, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, I just have a few more, guys. I'm almost there, almost there.
Just real quick, knowing the difference between the presidential and the midterm now, I'm, I'm very disappointed then. I can't believe you beat me on that. That is ridiculous.
I kicked your butt.
Yeah. Continue on.
Um, but it's still, you know, I think that points out too that there's a concern about that. So, um, let's see. So with, tonight, we were going to, we're going to be going through the process after we're done with the general, like, questions around how this whole thing's working. We're going to go through a discussion about the maps and we're going to come down to picking, you know, a handful. And then those maps will be published for folks to look at, to say, this is what council selected as the next phase of maps to look at, okay? At that time, will there be a place on the website where folks can comment on the specific maps that we have selected and their opinion of those maps that are already been kind of selected versus saying like, here's the map I have and here's my comment on my own map? But will they be able, able to comment on the maps that already exist on the website?
So definitely.
Okay.
There's the comment form and we encourage folks to comment on the specific focus maps. And, and I do emphasize that this is not a final vote today. That all the maps that are up there now will stay up there. There'll just be a new section that says, here's all the maps from the first round, here are the three to five focus maps. And then here's the new ones that come in over the next week or so.
Great. Because I would love to hear the feedback from the folks after we select tonight. I would love to hear the feedback from the folks of what they thought of our process, of how we, our deliberation, what we were saying, and if there's any comments on the maps we picked. So I would, I would love that. Um, one of the commenters mentioned percentage of Latino concentration, the max they can make was thirty-three percent. I didn't see the concentration of, of the proposed maps. Is that available somewhere online that I missed of what the, what the proposed maps would change things to?
So this is one of the challenges, having so many maps. So the, on the website, there are the PDF versions of the maps.
Okay.
And the second page of each PDF is demographics.
Okay, okay, I'll take a look at those then, okay.
Our standard report doesn't include the Armenian percentages, so there's a separate report that gives those numbers all by itself. But for each map, there's, remember that giant spreadsheet of data? There's all that data for every map on page two of each PDF.
You said there's a separate report for the Armenian population for each...
Yeah, at the top of the page, uh, on the draft maps page, at the top, there's a listing of here's the Ar- the Armenian demographics that we have.
Got it.
Each map in one.
Great, thank you. And last, let's see. Oh, I have two more, one more. Um, so speaking of maps, um, at some point during this process, will we be able to do kind of a survey of the community of what, like, their preferred map is? So let's say we whittle it down to three maps at the end and then that's the ones we're going to be deliberating on. And then is there a way for us to find out kind of what the communities, like, just what they prefer without having to have comments, just like a vote of yes, no, yes, no on these maps? So when we receive it, we kind of get a sense of what people like and don't like? Would that be accumulated somewhere?
I'm, I'm sure Ariano and the city staff have the capability to do that. That, I mean, you all are very familiar, polling data, you know how non-scientific surveys end up coming out is the caution. But yes, there's certainly a capability if that's the council's wish.
Yeah, okay.
Keep in mind that based upon Mr. Johnson, uh, our outside council's experience, um, this is very good turnout in terms of number of maps. And yet the public is complaining that our outreach is dismal. So I would just caution you that any confidence you put in the voting would likely be criticized that it is a mere fraction of the potential people had we done a door-to-door or some other method and...
That's true.
Yeah.
Good point, good point.
And, um, we did a, sorry, a follow-up question here. We did a survey last year, a citywide survey. If we wait until we have the final three maps or whatever, from that point on, how long does it take to get a survey out and get those results back?
So I would just caution that the reason this matter is before you is because of threat of litigation and only the five of you can make a decision in that matter.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I would just caution you that that is not a political decision.
Right. And, and, and why I ask that question is because it took a few months to get that process done.
Right, right.
Personally, as your city attorney, I would not recommend that.
Great.
Okay.
And I would say, we're, we're, we just finished We're Going to Surprise Arizona and they actually did an online survey. They got about two hundred and fifty votes and then they checked and seventy-two of them came from the same IP address. So, and nowadays when everyone had, you know, especially in Burbank, everyone has how many devices at home? That's how many different IP addresses they can vote from.
Thank you, thank you for the explanation. Yeah, I, I received that question from somebody and I just wanted to kind of get that out there about how the whole process works. And of course, folks can always email us directly of your opinion. So if you want to know what your vote is, or you want us to know what your personal vote is, please let us know. Um, to that last, that was my last question actually, to segue. Compared, just because you had, how many city, many cities you've worked with, compared to other cities, like, how awesome of a turnout are we having in Burbank? compared to other cities, like, how awesome of a turnout are we having in Burbank? I mean, it just, it, it seems to me like a lot, because I have talked to a number of other city representatives while we were at Cal Cities, because I was curious, you know, about a lot of things about their experiences going to districts. And the sense I got from them was that it was much less in, um, the community was much less involved in their processes than we're seeing. But, but maybe that was just my gut, so I'm just wondering what your experience is.
Yeah, so in the, in the community forums, they're definitely, you know, at the higher end, they're not off the charts by any means. But that's certainly been solid. And then the number of maps and the variety in maps that you've gotten is great. You know, infamously, we had a, we did two side-by-side cities and one was having 150 people turn out at every hearing and the other was having five. And the city clerk over here said, what are we doing wrong? And I said, no, no, the council members are at war over here. They were actually trying to gerrymander one of the council members out of office. And so I said, I can draw you a map that'll get 150 people to your hearing, but you don't want that.
Right, right.
So, so numbers are not the be-all, end-all. It's the, the value and the creativity and the usefulness of the input. And you're getting great input.
Right, so we're like getting great input. We are, I don't know, I just, that's the sense I got too. So I just feel like our community really cares about this. And, and even though I know there are folks that didn't hear it until recently, there's a lot of folks out that still haven't, that being involved in this community for a while, that it's always like, as, as, as Councilmember Mullins says, that there's always a certain percentage of folks who are involved in a lot of things. And then until it starts to affect like really broadly, then when you see everybody realizing what's kind of going on. It happens during elections, it happens during, you know, an issue that's in the city. People are like, wait, I didn't know that building was being built. No one told me that building next door was being built, even though it's been like months that we've been talking about it. So, um, I don't want to dismiss the, uh, the fact that folks haven't heard yet, but I also want to commend the, at this point, how many people we've heard from so far. So I want to do both. I want to recognize that we could do more outreach and I also want to commend the community for being so involved. So thank you for that. So those are all my questions so far, at least for that part of it. So thank you.
Hello, Vice Mayor, how are you?
Having a very pleasant evening. Sorry for keeping you all waiting and I do have questions.
Sure, absolutely.
I'll just note for the public's benefit, I was watching at least part of the presentation and comment. And as I do after every meeting, believe it or not, I'll go back and watch it after. So all of your comments, I get to take into consideration next time. Good presentation. Um, I just have a couple procedural questions. So if somebody's logging in and using the online tool, one of the things we talked about early in this process was comparing options for five districts, seven districts, four and an at-large. Is that an option that's available right now? Because I, I don't see any of those maps before us.
Correct. So the, the, the idea of the phase one and phase two is that that will be a phase two thing, looking at other options. As the city attorney I mentioned earlier, the, the five districts fits into the charter. So that's why the focus now is five. And then we can look at four, six, seven. If someone's technically savvy, they can use the online, they can change the setting in the, in the online mapping tool to fix it, but they have to be pretty savvy.
Yeah, and I know we're only taking comments, Mr. Mayor, but I would just say, you know, I, I think at this point there's no harm in collecting maps of all sorts and types. We may not discuss it until later, but if someone's taking the time right now to look at the map, you know, if I'm working on one, it might be easy for me kind of having a template in mind to say, okay, now if I added two more seats, you know, maybe I just adjust the lines here. That's just one council member's input. The second question I had is going back, back to my colleague's comment about, um, information about the composition of these districts. At our next meeting, would it be possible, if there were, say, five to 10 maps, that we could have some sort of an interactive display here? Where we could look at these districts, zoom in on boundaries, look at some of that statistical data? And I bring that up because I believe the LA City Redistricting Commission in their process was able to, to sort of play with it in real time, uh, if I'm not mistaken. And so I'm just wondering, you know, with some advance notice, do you have the technological capability to do that for us?
So technically, yes. The problem is the seven-day posting requirement. So if, this, this is where, I mean, you, you've heard about how complicated and poorly written the law is. The, the law is a seven, the map has to be posted seven days before it's adopted. Is adoption the introduction of the ordinance or is it second reading? You get in that very gray area that we don't want to get into. So that's the challenge is that if we were to make changes live in the, in the mid-July hearing, we'd probably have to, this would be a legal question that they'd have to evaluate, but we'd probably have to postpone introduction until the hearings seven days after that.
Okay. Yeah, speaking for myself, I'd be willing to do that because I really want, you know, these, again, you know, if districts are adopted by this council, they're going to substantially change elections in this city for, well, at least the next, you know, what, seven, eight years until we have the census and we do it again. So I would rather take our time and really understand the data and make sure that we're not diluting the voting power of certain communities. So, um, that's just my two cents.
If, if I could...
Please.
Uh, on your prior question about alternative district configurations. So I believe, and Mr. Johnson can correct me, the tool is currently set up for five districts and to calculate percentages dividing by five, the population in the districts. The problem is that, um, if you choose a seven-district alternative, that cannot be implemented without a charter amendment. So you're now creating a variety of maps that, should you like the seven districts, that is not possible to implement without a s- s- significant conflict in the charter and that changes the process. So there's just, it creates less certainty in the process and, and I don't know if it changes the setup parameters, but...
Certainly. Um, I think I have more comments to that, but Mr. Mayor, I know we're in question only, so I'll just, I'll just keep it going.
We're gonna move to deliberation next. So if you have any questions.
Great. Uh, just the last question I had was, um, I was looking at some of the maps. Um, and, 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 well, I, I was looking at all of them and here's what I noticed. There are a subset of maps and they, in my view, they sort of spread across some of the different categories. You've categorized them as group A, B, C. Here's what I noticed is a common theme. Some of these maps do not keep intact entire neighborhoods. For example, the Rancho is represented by two council members. It's split in half. Same with Magnolia Park, same with the Hillside. I was wondering if you could highlight, well, I, I think the ones I had here were 120... I was looking at 127, for example. I don't know if that's possible to throw on screen. So the reason I bring this up is there is one school of thought to say that to avoid the balkanization and the horse trading that you see on cities like City of Los Angeles, maybe there is an argument to be made that you do want two council members who are accountable to and have a vested interest in the Rancho, for example, or Magnolia Park. 127 probably comes the closest to that idea except that Districts one and four on that map, I don't think it really, um, the Hillside is still mostly in District four. So I was just wondering if there were any iterations, maybe a spin-off of that map that would more evenly divide the Hillside into two districts? And so, yeah, on this image, we're looking at the map on the bottom right-hand corner, map 127.
What you can do is map 127 west of the five and map 123 east of the five.
I, I, I think, yeah, from an artistic viewpoint, absolutely. I don't know if there would be any impacts on the population configuration, you know, taking into account C-VAP. So, yeah, but if, 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 um, if you haven't already, I guess what I'm saying is from this council member's perspective, I'd be interested in drilling more into a map that kind of looks like that. I'll save more for comment later, but, uh, I think that's at least one option the council should consider. You know, option A might be trying to keep whole neighborhoods represented by one district. But if we're gonna do our due diligence, we might want to consider what would it look like if there were two council seats representing particular neighborhoods?
Yeah, and this is the, the question the law gets into in the criteria of, again, the law is so badly written. It says you have to minimize divisions of neighborhoods, but, and minimize divisions of communities of interest. But community of interest is defined as somewhat, as an area that benefits from being in one district. And so if these are communities of interest, they would benefit from being in two seats, then you can divide them under the criteria, meet the criteria.
And, and, and I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I did have one more question because I, this is a really interesting thought process and our city attorney can weigh in if you want. What is that standard? Would Magnolia Park benefit from being intact in one district and having one representative? I think you could certainly make the case there. On the other hand, having two representatives on the council who have a very vested interest in that neighborhood, you could just as easily make the argument that they're better served with that model. I mean, how, from a legal perspective, how do we navigate that?
Well, you're, it's, it's a multi-factor analysis. So for every map, there's neighborhoods, there's, um, groups, which can't be the sole basis, but minority groups, but are, uh, the, the focus of dilution is, is one of the purposes. And if you divide one neighborhood into two and you're only doing five districts necessarily, you're compelling fewer districts on the other side of town. You know, I mean, it's not necessarily in a vacuum. So you brought up a good point about map 127. And, uh, map 123 is similar. So the, the, the patterns that Mr. Johnson went through before are the, um, vertical stacking of horizontal districts in, uh, I think it was group, uh, A. And, uh, and then different, different configurations basically on east and west. And it looks like 123 on the east, the west side of town, one, or, yeah, 123, well, the, the boundaries are, some of them are interchangeable, in other words.
Yeah.
So, um, the, the map that Mr. Yegparian kind of presented, or his colleague who's not here, presented visually is relative, is similar to map 123, more so on the west side of town. And this will come through in the next iteration of maps because it didn't make the initial deadline. But on the east side of town, it was slightly different. It was sort of like 123 with a little different boundary in between Districts one and three. Uh, and that respected, uh, respected more a, uh, significant community of Armenian residents in District three, which requires a little, uh, a little bit different configuration of number three. So you're looking at many different factors. Um, and if it works out to divide Mag Park in two, I don't know what that does to the Rancho, if you want, you know. So I mean, these are the considerations you want to weigh. Also not having I-5, otherwise divide, whether it makes sense to the, to have I-5 then divide other neighborhoods. There may be those trade-offs.
Yeah, yeah, I see your point. So for purposes of a question, uh, would it be possible at our next hearing? I, I, I'm very interested to see this map when it's properly before us for consideration, the one the city attorney was just referring to. I'd also be curious if you and your team, sir, were able to mock up sort of a combination of maps 123 and 127. I like what I'm seeing on the east side of the five in map 123. And I like what I'm seeing on the west side of the five in 127. And I'll say it with the caveat of, I'm not framing, I'm not saying that's the map I want to go with. I just think it'd be interesting to look at what that would look like. Uh, and I don't see a map that clearly portrayed of the set that we have before us tonight, so.
And it looks like they're matching public.
Yeah, I think we could, yeah, I, yeah.
And let me just jump in on that a little bit. When in the staff report and the presentation, we talk about council direction on revise our new maps, that is exactly the most common direction we get, which is can you take the west side of this map and the east side of that map and put them together? 100% we could do that.
One question, just to go back two steps. You mentioned, and I really liked what you said about the redistricting commission. They do have high-tech everything. And to Councilmember Takahashi's point about getting comments, that's also visible to them on, in the moment. I understand it's, you know, we're, we're a little more low-tech here. But you mentioned something about printouts. Would it be possible to have that PDF printout that tells us the populations? Because right now, as I look at the maps, I don't know which ones hit that 33%, which ones don't. Because given the threat of litigation, that is something that we should be taking into consideration. And as I see them all laid out on the page, I have no way of knowing that.
Certainly, and that's part of the benefit of narrowing down a handful of focus maps is that if you had it right now, it would be 55, 56 pages long. Uh, but if we only have three, three to five maps. But yes, we can certainly provide it to you.
Yeah, good.
I want to, um, go back to what the Vice Mayor was saying. I want it just to understand it a little bit more. If we take, it doesn't matter really, any, any, on map 123, let's say District four, when you, um, mentioned earlier about having two vested council members representing that area, take Mag Park or Rancho. Does that mean we then divide that one area into two, two separate districts? Or two of the council, whoever they will be, um, will run for the same seat and whoever gets the seat wins type of thing? I, I'm trying to understand how is it you get two in one district?
Got it. So it's, it looks like our city attorney may want to jump in on part of it, but I'll just quickly say, what I was referring to is what we see in map 127, for example, um, on, oh, the page isn't numbered. It's Group C. And, and, and the reason I was sort of looking at that as a concept is, so in, in my neighborhood, I'm kind of in that weird spot of it's the Rancho, but we're also really adjacent to the media district overlay. I, I could see you making a case for no. We want the Rancho in one entire district. On the other hand, Disney's also, you know, technically right there in the Rancho. And you could make an argument that maybe there would be an interest in having Disney and Warner Brothers in the same district. So again, I'm not making my mind up on that. I just wanted to more explore what the holistic map would look like. So that was, that's what I was talking about. And then I don't know if the city attorney, it looked like he had a comment maybe on the whole, like, yeah, with the incumbents.
So I understood what you were talking about. I, I was thinking like Councilmember Mullins. Um, but to, to that point, if you look at map 123, so we, if we just stick with the left half of the map, the west side of the city. So in map 123, Group A, uh, District four is primarily a Mag Park district. Map five is both media district and the Rancho. And the Rancho has one representative and Mag Park has one representative. On map 127, for the same west part of town, Group three, I'm sorry, District three is the west half of Mag Park and half of the studios. And District five is, is primarily the, the horsekeeping part of Rancho, not much of the media district, although I think it's the Burbank Studios down there. So it's got part media district, most of the horsekeeping area or all of the horsekeeping area of the Rancho, plus Rancho Providencia, which has neighborhood, neighborhood protection issues. And so, uh, to the Vice Mayor's point, three and four provides two council members that represent Mag Park, but District five represents both Mag Park and the Rancho. And District three represents both Mag Park and the media district. And district three represents both Mag Park and the media district.
And there's a little bit of Rancho on the, on the very corner of, of three.
Right.
Okay, that, that sounds much clearer because I, the way it sounded to me earlier was actual two bodies in one, in one district itself. So I was trying to figure out how would you have two representatives? So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for bringing up that combination because I was looking at the exact same combination, actually, especially after we saw the presentation from the two ANCA folks with their preference for the east side. And I did just some quick looking up the stats for the, stats for the, the, the percentage of Latino and Armenian. So for 127, the west side configuration with those three districts is actually one of the best concentrations with 34% being one of the districts.
What, what, what number map is that?
Uh, 127. So 127, sorry, one second. 127, district two is 34%. It's probably rounded up, but 34% district two and district.
And just specify, you're looking at the percentage of the voter registrations, correct?
Yes, percentage of voter registration.
I would guess district one.
Uh, no, district five, so.
In map 127?
Mm-hmm. Yep, so the blue one and the beige one.
Oh.
So that's, if you look at the voting age population, it's a little bit lower in two and a little higher in five, but it's, you know, it's still pretty high percentage, pretty high concentration.
I drew a line with my pencil I was looking at.
Yeah, you know, it's kind of how small numbers. And then in 123, the east side is, is highlighted as one of the better Armenian percentage accumulations with 24% being the highest percentage. Looks like it's even possible to get, oh, no, 25 is possible, but 24 is really close. That's a district three in the 123 map, as well as the next highest, which is, where are we at? 18% in district one. So if you look at the two combinations of the map, just looking at percentages, I mean, that is actually really good. And if that's the goal is to maximize the concentration, it, I mean, that one could argue whether that's a goal or not, but if that's the goal, that those two combinations do really maximize that.
So you're saying the west side of map 127 and the east side of map 123?
I originally liked that combination because of how, I, I am looking at balanced districts that aren't going to, personally, that aren't going to like feel that their district has one very, very concentrated interest and that anybody who runs there has to focus on that interest. I like the idea of having balanced districts that have multiple interests so that any candidate would have to look at multiple different things to, you know, kind of balance. And, and that, that's why I was looking at those two because they seem pretty balanced. But then I look at the percentages and they're actually even pretty good percentages. So so I want to throw that out there to consider when we're looking at the different combinations. And I wanted to thank you for being on the same wavelength there, too.
And thank you, Councilmember Takahashi, for bringing up those percentages because I think it solves one of, one of the issues we're looking at. And, and definitely to your point, I, once the city attorney brought up, you know, the different areas that are there, it got me thinking, some of what we heard in public comment was those concerns. Are we building, you know, somebody mentioned a hillside district that has a lot of money power, if you will, right? Or a Rancho district that has one specific interest and then having one council member that really by poll is going to be responding to that one interest versus what we have now, we respond to everybody. You can't pick and choose. You can't pick and choose between renters and homeowners. You can't pick and choose between people that own horses and those of us that don't. You can't pick and choose between all of that, right? And this creates the closest thing I think we can get to that balance while having to district. Because we, you know, each council member, if in that combination, would have to respond to multiple different types of voters. And I think that's democracy and that is fair.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? City Attorney? Any other questions? All right. Okay, I, I will now declare the public hearing closed. The council will now deliberate. Just for the record, this is a note and file, but that doesn't preclude us from giving council direction to staff. What is the council's pleasure?
I thought we've been giving directions all night.
Well, I mean, we technically have, we always give them directions.
I, I believe we've been, from all the comments. I, I know, I'm, I'm interested in also looking at the additional maps that have been submitted. I think it's going to be helpful. It's going to be confusing, I'm sure, having all these maps looking at. But it's also going to be helpful to take a piece of this and that and put them together like we already like the 123, 127, maybe we can, you know, make some adjustments. So I definitely, I am interested to look at the rest of the maps and get more feedback from the public. I want them to know that we are, you know, again, we repeat ourselves, that we are listening to them. Nothing really is a done deal, whether we go out to the voters, whether we wait. There's a lot of things on the table that we need to address first and, and we're taking it at every public hearing. We're adding additional knowledge, information, not only to us, but also to the residents. So yeah, I'm looking forward to the next hearing and I like all the feedback, the presentation, and look forward to getting some more information. Thank you.
Okay, great. Anyone else? I can just formalize it. I would, as we've all discussed, love to see some iteration of, combination of maps 123 and 127 as, as we've described. I guess it'd probably be prudent just to go through some of the other maps, just to give more feedback. Independently, I like, I like 123. I'm interested in learning more. Not picking any of these tonight, but I think that's an interesting one. 127 as well. You know, the one, the one that I did not like particularly was 126. That, I don't know, that, that one just did not seem to really keep communities of interest together to me. You know, looking at it, looks kind of Jerry Mandar-ish. No disrespect to whoever promoted, submitted it, thank you for doing that. But given the many excellent choices that we have, I think there are other options that, that look better to me. The other comment, because again, we're just getting feedback, right? So 118, I would steer away from map 118 for the reason that it really keeps most of the hillside in a single district. And I don't know, it seems sort of an arbitrary separation for me. Glen Oaks has the cutoff there. I'm, I'm just, I'm not loving it. And I guess if I didn't mention it all already, maybe map 128, that's an interesting one to me. It's a very interesting configuration there. It, I think we, yeah, yeah, I guess that's, that's an interesting one. So those are some of my thoughts on the maps I've seen.
I just want to say I agree with everything the vice mayor just said, but I also would like to add, I don't like map 111. Just for practicality sake, I know it's legal for us to do that and create a district that goes around like that, but I don't think that's fair to voters. I think that's confusing. I think we've seen it when the city of LA has done similar things, like there's sliver districts. And I, I don't want to do that to our folks. You know, folks might end up confused thinking they're in district two when they're really in one and such, so.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what Councilmember Perez was saying about simplicity or making it clear. Any of the map, maps that are not, how do you put it? Like, if you're living in that space, you know, I'm in this district. It's not that clarity's not there. I feel like is going to be confusing and unless there's a really clear reason why we need to kind of, you know, have a jagged edge or jet out in one way from a like, you know, balanced perspective, because balance is very, very important to me. I, I'd like the idea of keeping it simple, at least from a visual perspective. So when you're looking at a map, you're like, I know where I, where I live. I know which district I'm in. I know where I'm going to be voting or which part of me voting for. Also, I think it's a little easier to parse like what neighborhoods are covered when it's, when the, when it's like kind of all together. And there's a couple of comments I was also, I, I'm not interested in any, personally, I'm not interested in any of the maps that cross the freeway. I think keeping the maps kind of, the freeway being, or the five freeway, I should say, the five freeway splitting down the middle. We're going to have some changes with, you know, different things coming in the city with potentially with the train and the, we have, you know, just things going on that I want to make sure that we're not, I don't know. It's just simplicity sake, yeah.
I just thought of something when you said with the freeway.
Yeah.
And I could be wrong, but I know the school district did not use the freeway as their divider. So I'm wondering if, because I see some of those maps, you know, with the freeway and extending over. So I'm wondering if some, some people who submitted these maps might be thinking that's exactly the same because the school district have to go place their districts based on where the schools are. So they did kind of go over, they weren't having the freeway as boundary.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if some of these individuals that submitted the maps could be thinking the same thoughts.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
If I could, because we are in the process of trying to narrow out ones you clearly are not interested in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For purposes of giving us specific to council members, Takahashi's comment about the freeway, can I list some numbers that, where the districts clearly cross the freeway that, that you're referencing?
Go for it.
So where these districts clearly cross the freeway in a way that I heard you say you do not favor, I've got, if you look at the very last slide, I'm looking at map 104.
Boo, boo 104.
Map 108B, map 110, map 111, map 112, map 114, map 116, map 118, map 124, and map 125, and finally, map 126 are maps where predominantly large districts cross the freeway.
Yeah.
And I, I just want to flag those because I'm trying to keep notes.
Yeah.
So that it, it's our goal to try to focus community comment, the discussion of 127 and 123 with the expectation that the east half of 123 addresses some of the issues that Mr. Yegparian brought to our attention that we expect to see on his map. That's very helpful. So I just wanted to, to highlight that I, that, that's what I understand to be your comment.
Yep.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if everyone else agrees with me on that.
I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I just also think the freeway, I mean, it's so, the neighborhoods are so delineated that it, yeah, it's.
Especially on the southern end. Once you get up, like, once you start to reach almost to the edge of the border on the north side, it crosses over a little bit easier.
Yeah, a little bit, but.
But only slightly.
Yeah, okay. So I, I think I, I still favor the 123, 127 combo, but I would, I also like both of them individually, I think it's worth considering. I, I just want to point out really quickly, I, I find 124 to be interesting because it's just like all, it's just like a stripe. I, I don't know if I prefer it, but I just thought it was a really interesting and creative way to look at the city. So whoever submitted that, kudos, because I think that's interesting. I mean, you can't go wrong with the balance if you just literally stripe across the city because everything's all mixed up, right? But I don't know how practical it is, but I just thought that was an interesting way to, to keep everything balanced. So just want to put that out there. Thank you.
I don't want to add anything.
Do you have anything else? No? Oh, Mr. Mayor, just, just one other thing. Do we have access, if not tonight for the next meeting, to, to the map that was adopted by the school district, just for comparison point?
Sure. And actually, from the comments, I was just making myself a note to add it to the interactive review maps if people can overlay it.
Thank you.
Just with the caveat that the state rules that I mentioned don't apply to the school board. So keep that in mind.
Hundred, hundred percent, totally understand that. Just would be curious because if we were to adopt one of these maps or a combination of these maps, it'd just be interesting to know how similar or different it would look to what the school districts might look like.
And I, and I would add too, it'll probably look fairly different because they have a couple that cross freeway. But their thinking was actually the exact same thinking that Councilmember Perez was just laying out of, and some of you else were commenting on as well, of taking the, their attendance zones or their major community of interest and intentionally making sure that no one board member controlled any one attendance zone. So that was, their, their map may look very different, but their goals are very similar to what you were discussing.
And the other thing I'd just add for public benefit, I'm, I'm sorry, no, no question for you, sir, is the reason I, that my mind goes there is actually to your point, Councilmember Perez, if I was just representing the Rancho and it was that district in its entirety, I wouldn't, I mean, that's all my interest would be. I mean, I'd want to get reelected by my neighbors and I wouldn't necess, it wouldn't be as it is today where you're thinking about an entire city and how you balance competing interests. I would really only to a degree care and be beholden to the residents of my very specific district. And with all due respect to our neighbors to the south and to the, to the west, I, I think we've seen a bit more Balkanization and horse trading in LA and even this week with headlines. I think we see how that's trading, how that's working out. And why mess with the good thing we have here in Burbank?
And we definitely don't want horse trading in Burbank.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
I also want to mention with the school district, attendance zones, you called them, right? They have attendance zones that they do have to consider as well. That's a kind of an underlaying map that we don't have. I mean, we have neighborhoods and we have communities of interest, but they have very, very specifically delineated attendance zones, which is a, less of a, like perception, it's more of a concrete part to consider, which we don't. I also want to point out too, that I, there are some folks in the community who are, who really would like to see us adopt the same exact map as the school district. And I just want to put it out there that I know that that's out there and people want to do that. So I hope that putting the school district map doesn't encourage folks to think that might be an option. I don't think that's practical, just from what I've seen so far. I don't want to 100% rule it out, but from what I've seen so far, I don't think that our considerations are similar enough to be able to do that. But I just want to be careful to say that before we put it on the website and give any indication that we might be considering that. So I want to make that clear.
If it's, if it's their map 104, which the city manager found on their website, all but one of their districts substantially cross Interstate Five. So just as a comment.
Ooh, they're going to have fun canvassing there. And in fact, that's what, what I wanted to close with. Let's see. I canvassed 2017, canvassed measure I, 2018, measure QS. I canvassed for petition in 2019, for my own election in 2020, and I did a bunch of other stuff in 2022. I've canvassed all over the city. Every, every single neighborhood I've knocked on doors. I will tell you, by creating districts that are easy to navigate for an individual on foot, you are going to get more engagement, you're going to get more, more voter participation, and you're going to get candidates who are able to talk to more people and engage with more people. So I would very much like to stick with the early slide that we put up, the rules guiding these delineations. Number two, the California criteria for cities. The geographically contiguous, minimize the division of neighborhoods, and the easily identifiable boundaries and making them compact. By sticking to our major cross streets, sticking to, you know, north and south delineations, not crossing the five unless it's easy to cross. And, and, you know, I've been up in the north, north end there. It's, it's much easier there than it is down, once you hit Magnolia and Olive and Alameda, it's impossible. I think, I think the 1, 1, 123, 127 combo that we've been looking at fits all of that. And obviously, I'd love, be very interested to see Mr. Donahue's maps, what Anka is putting together, all of these other maps that we're going to see. So let's try to get those in for the, for the next one, for the July 7th. If you're at home, you're watching, put in your own maps, find some good, clear boundaries. That's my recommendation. And let's see what we get.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I have an objective.
Oh, sure.
To try to. To that end, I'd like to direct you to a few pairings. If you look at 122 and 123, they're somewhat similar. On 123, the west, the boundaries are more clear on arterials on 123 than 122. And the boundaries are more clear on district, gosh, I think that's district. The green one.
The green one is three.
The green one on 123 is much more clearly defined than the purple one on 122. So I'm asking if council prefers 123 over 122?
Yes.
Given that they're similar? Okay.
Yep.
And then I would direct you to 127, which we've already talked about, and 119. They're very similar, but the boundaries in 119 are much more.
They're zigzaggy.
They're more zigzaggy, yeah.
That's the official term, right?
The one notable difference is where we talked about how the media district was divided in 127. If you look at 119, the green district, which I would call the Rancho for ease of reference, kind of loops around it. And I heard a count, several council members say, it may be a council priority that a district have to represent multiple interests, not single interests. And so if you look at 127, for both the green and beige districts, they both represent the Rancho and part of Mag Park or part of Mag Park and the media district. So they're not single, so that the council members are, have a little bit more diversity in who they represent.
Yeah, because you can see 119, the green, what they tried to do is capture that little section of the Rancho that's behind the media district.
Right. So, so does the council, is it clear enough that you prefer 127 over 119?
I do, yeah.
All right. I don't know if Mr. Johnson has any other clarifying questions. Oh, the one other thing I would say is, okay, we looked at the potential combination of 127 and 123 with a preference for the east half or the mountain half of 123 and the western half of 127. If you look at 115, it's the opposite. It's actually the antithesis of that. It's the horizontal districts of 123. And the eastern part or less preferential part of 127, is it safe to rule out 115?
Yeah, I'd say so.
Okay.
And, and actually, given everything that's been ruled out so far, I might jump to the other side and say, it sounds like, and, and correct me if I'm missing something, but it sounds like there's general consensus on 123 and 127. And, and then Councilmember Schultz mentioned 128 as well. I mean, are we ready to say those are your three focus maps?
And a fourth map, which is half of 123 and half 127?
Definitely.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, speaking of havesies, look at, draw your attention to map 123, but the east, the east side of it. But take a look at map 105. See how the Golden, Golden State District's a little bit differently aligned, is a little bit less freeway crossing, I'd say. It's a little bit less of the length of the freeway.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if that might be a little of a, that would be an interesting variation on the Golden State makeup. So that, basically, map 2023, the blue and the pink would be adjusted a little bit compared to 105.
So you want the, that corner on the. So you want that corner on the, over the five to go more north?
Yeah.
Which is easier to cross, it is easier to cross.
Yeah.
Than trying to come down and capture some of that stuff down San Fernando.
Yeah, and I think that the neighborhood there is more cohesive, too, with the other parts of the Golden State as well as, just because of the way they cross over, it's easier to cross over. And if 123, there may be a little blip there that's kind of separate, even though it looks like it's all together, I think there might be a little blip over the freeway that's on the south side, on the southeast side of the freeway that might be a little bit like away from the rest of the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, that's weird.
Because it's, you got to go over and down.
It's like a little nubbin that's hanging off.
Exactly. So I think, what do you think about adding?
These are all technical terms, by the way.
I know, right? And, you know, zigzaggy and blip and... Would you all consider adding a version that would be a combination of 123 and 105?
Yeah, I like the blue district two in 105.
Yeah, I like it, too. Get some of those two options.
I just want to call attention one more time, and definitely agree with that.
Me, too.
Want to call attention one more time, 128. The city attorney brought to us some logic with map 119 and how that district down there kind of covers the whole Rancho and how we don't want to, you know, create that for one council member. 128 does the same thing as map 119 in that green area. So I don't know if you were saying you like that one, but I...
I think we removed 128, right?
No, well, we never reached a consensus. I think I originally said that I was, I'm interested in looking at 128. I'll be very candid, it's not my favorite. I wouldn't be opposed to removing it. However, I do feel like I'm flying a little bit without all the information tonight because they look great, but I don't know what the, it was more just like I wanted a comparison point to look at some of the data of the composition of the districts. But the ones that we've talked about tonight, the combination maps, if I had to pick some favorites, that's personally where I am leaning tonight.
I'm just trying to whittle it down for you. So 128 looks like 119.
Because we're going to get more maps, too, so.
Yeah, so...
We can take 128 off, then.
I was going to say, we can leave it in. I mean, if we come back and it doesn't look right for us based on the information that we're going to see from the report, we can decide to delete it at that time.
Also, so we have four maps right now, right? We have 127, 123, combination between 123 and 127, and combination between 123 and 105. That's what I've got, is the four maps.
That's what I have.
Okay. Those are all balanced, in my opinion, and they're all, but 128 is literally like the opposite of balanced.
It's what we just ruled out with 119.
And I'm just wondering, like, just for consideration, to have like a really opposite map for that, to have a conversation point in the...
Okay, keep it in.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, because it's all hillside, it's all Rancho, it's all Mag Park.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was my point, is, and look, I don't know who wrote 128, so I hope they don't take it the wrong way. I think it's an interesting map.
That's an NDC map, so say whatever.
Oh, okay.
Say whatever you want about it.
So NPC?
NDC.
National demographics.
What you're saying is it's okay to hate it. You're not going to offend anybody.
Like if it was, if it's an NPC.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I don't know that I'd pick that map, but to your point, excellent point, Councilmember Takahashi, I think it would just be an interesting conversation point. Because again, it's not like we have that really nifty, sorry, not trying to give you a hard time, but we don't have that nifty tool where you can like pull up the data in real time. So I just wanted something about as opposite of the rest of it.
Great.
Just to compare.
I'm going to mark that as devil's advocate map.
Okay, so...
Solid movie, by the way.
We've got minimizing I-5 dividing a district. We've got encouraging districts representing multiple interests, not single interests. We've got easy boundaries. People know where they are in a district, that they identify with that district. We are giving effect to increasing the influence of voters, of both Latino voters, which is the allegation, but we expect that part of 123 is in the same theme as the maps Mr. Yeg Parian brought, and that those will hopefully, we'll look at combinations there. So that's like five different factors that we're using to kind of screen these out.
Yeah, I was going to say...
Screen them in.
For the combo maps, I can put the 105 in, so we, unless someone likes the configuration of 123 and 127 of the airport district, I could just switch it to 105 and that would eliminate a map, too. We just have one new combo map.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'm just, it's not close enough of a, I would love to hear from them in that area of what they think of that.
Well, we got, I mean, they're bringing stuff back.
Yeah, okay.
We're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a note and file, move on, we got other stuff to do.
Five words.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, all right, great. Last thing I'm going to say, and I don't want us to talk about it because there is potential for litigation. We are all watching what's happening in Santa Monica, and we will bring an update. Okay, great, we have consensus? This is a note and file?
Yeah.
Okay. We now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, June 27, 2023, for a joint city council meeting in the council chambers, 275 East Olive Avenue. Thank you all, I'll see you there.